All the, understand how much time and devotion that they put into it and all the coaches and how much time they put into it. A special group of people here to get to this point. So, and it came with a lot of work and sacrifice from, from all of these athletes. First of all, I get to introduce Hayden Bennett here. Hayden was the first team all-conference bowler. She had the opportunity to go to the state championships and compete in that. And a little story about that is it really didn't get started off on the right foot. As we woke up to my car being broken into and my daughter's car being stolen. We went to, we got in the car, finally got up to Tacoma, bowled it. She got to practice a little bit. Heading back to the hotel, we kind of come to a stop on the freeway. Wham, we get rear-ended. And I kind of turned and looked at Hayden, I said, "I don't know if there's an omen or not, but it ain't looking too good." Needless to say, she's a competitor and she didn't let things, battle her whole that. But she got there and we knew that she had to get about a 190 average to, to compete for a state title. And the first game she bowled a 183 and other girl bowled a 256. And we were like, "Uh-oh, we better up that average a little bit." And she went out and bowled a 264, 246, and was neck and neck in the last game. And last, I think, six, seven, eight, she bowled a strike, 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 and was able to win a state title for Kamikin, first bowling title. But Hayden, true competitor, she deserved everything she did. I would like to say it was all her coach, but I'd be lying to you. She, she's an awesome young lady. She's going to go compete in Michigan for another tournament. She's got a lot of great things on her horizons and very proud of coach. This is Hayden Bennett.
Well done.
Totally worth recalling.
So I don't know what it is, if it's Scott, but between the car accident and the break-in during football season, the bus broke down on the way to state tournament. So we have to have a conversation about that. Next, we have Brian Bennealy, who is our boys' basketball coach. They were MCC champs and competed in the state tournament. So we're going to invite Brian up.
Hey, thank you for having us. I can't tell you how nice it is to be back here talking to you guys. Last year, we obviously had the COVID and didn't have the opportunity to compete throughout the state. And we had an extremely competitive team. And so we were really, really thankful to have the opportunity to be able to go and compete at state tournament this year. We had a great group of kids and they invested a ton of time, spent a lot of time and energy. And I know that there was a bunch of people at the district office that spent a lot of time talking to the Department of Health during the winter months about regulations and everything else, and just so our kids could get to play. And I know that there was a lot of pulling of hair and a lot of consternation by people throughout the community and everywhere else, but I also know there was a lot of time invested just to allow us to be able to play. You know, not having a season last year made it all that much sweeter to be able to get back. We were kind of the last group to get to really compete in the spring of 2020 at the state tournament. And then we obviously dealt with what last year was. And then to be able to get back this year was really, really sweet. And it was a great group of kids. They worked their tails off both in the offseason and during the season. They, they did everything that was asked for them and it was, and it was really nice. We finished fourth in the state. We didn't accomplish everything we, we set out to. But I couldn't be prouder of the kids for everything that they dealt with and what they did throughout the year. They're just a tremendous group and I think that the entire community would be really proud of them. And again, I just want to thank you guys on, for everything that you guys did this year for us. Congratulations.
All right. So next for Kamikin is our wrestling program. Coach Isaac Romero is here and he qualified five kids for the state wrestling tournament. So we're going to invite him to speak.
All right, once again, just like them, thank you guys for everything you guys have done. Athletes back into some competition. Next, I'd like to just, you know, say congratulations and thanks to these athletes, you know, that stayed placed. There was a lot of time, hard work, energy, and putting, you know, work in the offseason. And for us to be able to come and, you know, do what we did as a team after, you know, COVID and all of these hoops that we got to jump through, you know, it was really good to see these guys, you know, continue on, persevere and, you know, accomplish things that they've always, you know, probably dreamed about doing. So with that being said, this year, you know, it was, it didn't start out the greatest. We never had a full lineup, you know, people were out with COVID, injuries, everything like that. So, you know, we didn't do so hot as a team with, you know, duels. But we did come back and finished pretty strong, you know. We cracked the, you know, top 10, finished with the ninth place finish at the state tournament. And I'll like to call up Juan Hoffman, Jackson McCallum, they're here today with us. There's a few others, Ethan Broker, Andy Castilla, and Clayton Young, who also helped, you know, to that ninth place finish. So Juan Hoffman, third place finish, you know, wasn't what he wanted. He was ranked number one going into state, but, you know, we learned a lot from that. And I think that, you know, if he continues on to do what, you know, he wants to do, I think that, you know, that learning experience will definitely, you know, help him to get to where he needs to be with, which is a state title. Jackson McCallum, you know, great finish, state champion. Let's give him a half to that. Awesome tournament. They did exactly, you know, what they needed to do. Me as a coach, you know, you're always preparing, you know. So I'm like, worst case scenario, this is probably what's going to happen. You know, best case scenario, this is what should happen. And it ended out just, you know, just like we wanted. They all won their last match at the state tournament, which was great. They ended the season with a win. And Jackson here is going, South Dakota minors, signed there. So he'll be going there and play some football, not wrestle, but it's okay. You know, Juan, he's, he's already back in the wrestling room getting ready for next year.
What grade is Juan?
Juan, he is a sophomore, correct? Yeah, so he got two more years. And yeah, I'm excited to see what he does and what Jackson does in college. And it was great to be part of their experience, you know. I learned a lot from them, just like I'm sure they learned from me. So good job to them. So Juan.
You know, one of the toughest roads to the medal stand is third place. I had two sons that finished third on a couple occasions. And when you hit the third place, you have worked your butt off. You had, you know, eight, nine, 10 matches and it is a tough road. So congratulations. Next up from South Ridge, Tim Woods is going to introduce his boys and girls wrestling.
All right. Again, thanks for having us. I appreciate it very much. Especially with the winter season, the challenge that it was with COVID testing and all the hoops we had to jump through to get these kids off the regionals and state and to compete at the high level that they did. Our wrestling program at Rogers has been a staple during our winter season. It's probably our best program during the winter. It's done really well the last six to eight years. And with these two at the helm, it's only going to get better. Our head coaches, Lepita Mendez and Romero Gonzalez are top-notch and they're only going to get them to where they need to be and proceed to be champions in the future. Bring them up, both at the same time, Romero Gonzalez and Lepita Mendez.
Hello. This is my first year with Kennewick School District as a teacher and as a coach. So I was pretty excited to make the switch, coming from Grandview School District. But we're looking to build our wrestling program and, you know, compete forever. That's the goal. So we started that a few years ago with the youth wrestling program. And we actually are starting to see some benefits coming from that, both boys and girls. This is our girls' coach, Lepita Mendez, and she'll go ahead and introduce our female wrestler.
Yeah.
So I, this is my, I'm going to say fifth season here at South Ridge. It's my fifth season here at South Ridge coaching. It's been a roller coaster for us just because we've never really had a real team. We've only had like a couple of girls join and then they end up quitting. And she's like my soldier. She started her freshman year, finished all through. Last year, she was my only girl wrestler. So her record this year was 30 and eight around there. And she, I'm going to say during state was, she was in the hardest bracket. One 30, there's 32-man bracket and she ended up coming on top. I don't even think she believed that she placed when she had her match, like her last match she actually placed. And she placed sixth. And she is the first girl to place at South Ridge. So that is super proud of her. And she will be going to Texas to run track. But it's super proud and can't wait for what the future holds for her. Madison, baby.
And so I'm going to introduce an individual wrestler as well. Just looking back and reflecting on our season, it was my first year. So we saw a lot of things that we can improve on and a lot of things that worked well. So Jacob was a major part of, of the points we scored in duel meets and in tournaments. And so this is Jacob Chappa walking up here. He's only a 10th grader. And, you know, I can remember at the beginning, he's also one of the, we started our young sons program, our youth program about three years ago when I first moved up to the Tri-Cities. And he was one of the founding members of that team as well. So, you know, just watching, watching him work with our youth wrestlers right now as a coach is just awesome. He's still on the mat right now, whether he's coaching with us, with the youth wrestlers, or he's also headed to a national tournament this weekend and he's going to compete with Team Washington. And just keep going, you know, he's, he, there's a big passion. You know, I can see it coming out of him in wrestling and I hope he does really big things with it. I can remember the first maybe week when he walked into the wrestling room. We've only had three state champions in South Ridge's history. And so he pointed out, we have three posters up there for the three past state champions. And he looked up there and said, "I'm going to be up there this year." You know, he kind of jokingly said that and he mentioned it this week too. And he went out to state and won the state championship. So, you know, he's only a 10th grader. He worked really hard, battled, went through a lot of adversity this season, but came on top and has a gold medal for it. So I'd like to really congratulate him.
All right, from Kennewick, the athletic director, Anna Harrods.
So thank you for inviting us. I have one of our most successful winter sports consistently in the last 15 years is girls' bowling. This year, they were very successful, ran through the league pretty well, pretty easy. Last year, they did the same, but didn't have an opportunity to compete at state. So we're glad that these girls were able to compete at state. This year, it was still a shorter tournament than they would have liked. It's usually a two-day tournament and the WIA turned it into one day because of COVID regulations. So they had a very long competitive day, which was great. And they got second place in state as a team. I will let our assistant coach, Diane Okerman, introduce the girls.
Like she said, I'm the assistant coach. The head coach couldn't make it tonight, unfortunately. So we have seven girls in our team. One of our girls, Sasha, could not make it tonight, but we have all six of these girls. We got Cassandra Foss, Courtney Foss, Katie Richardson, Cage Harden, Kaylee Johnson, and Callie Tippett. And they worked really hard this year, obviously making second at state. And obviously I take no credit. A lot of them work hard during school and a lot of them are in leagues outside of the district. Like how many of you guys are in outside? So we were undefeated during the league, took first place, and the first place at districts, which qualified us to go to state. And then like Anna said, we took second at state. And I think that's it. So they did really good and I'm super proud of them.
Carrie DeForest here, you know, but it's Heather Lee. You know, it is my pleasure and I think this is, I've been doing this a long time. And this is the first time we've called up a coach or a team from MCP, Mid-Columbia Partnership. The coach of the archery team is Heather Lee and she's going to talk about two of her athletes.
Thank you for having us. Yep, we had our first archery team this year. In fact, first team of any sport. So kind of exciting. If you don't know much about archery, well, with COVID, we had to do everything virtual. So we shot in our gym. I put it on Zoom so families could watch. And then we would input our scores and compare them against other schools. And you get six rounds of five arrows. Best score would be 300. So to give you an idea, Aubrey, your average was probably about 260 this year. We did five tournaments and then we had our state tournament a couple of weeks ago. She's a junior. Sam Rolfing is a fifth grader. So I teach fourth through 12th grade archery. And Sam, a little story about him, he signed up for two of my archery classes because I teach it year-round, plus the team. And at the beginning of the year, he would shoot and his arrows wouldn't even stick in the target. They kept bouncing off, bouncing off. And we shoot from 10 meters and 15 meters and he just kept saying, "I hate archery. I don't like this." I'm like, "Well, you're in two classes. You better like it." So I worked with them. We kind of put his draw weight lower and we went forward a little bit. And here he is qualifying for nationals from the beginning of the year, not even sticking his arrows. So perseverance on his part. So great job to Sam. Aubrey, with a 260 average, shot 281 at the state tournament, took second place. So awesome job to her. So, um, awesome job to her. Back to Sam for the state tournament. He took fourth place in the elementary division. So very good job. So this will be the first year we send a couple of kids down to nationals, which is in Utah at the end of April. So, um, we wish them the best of luck, and we had a lot of fun, super proud of you guys. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, next on the agenda is communication from parents, staff, and district residents. A little bit of our guidelines prior to speaking to the board. The board appreciates hearing from parents, staff, and district residents. At our regular board meetings, the board of directors provides an opportunity for communications for parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during our working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as our goal is to listen and to learn. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Please note, it is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the board, board's business meeting. During the public comment period, please refrain from any positive or negative expressions, such as clapping or booing, in response to a person who is providing public comments. If any audience member has any concerns about how they are being treated by any other attendee, please contact a cabinet member to report the issue. The board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the board with any such comments. Okay. Dr. Pierce, I think, has my sheet. We're checking to see if anyone's online to give comments. Three people to give online comments. Okay. Perfecto. Okay, uh, to start off the evening, we have a special guest. We have Representative Brad Clifford. Uh, I would like to invite him to come up and address the board.
Madam Superintendent, Mr. President, board members. State Representative Brad Clifford here to honor the parents, the great parents, grandparents, and guardians of the students in Kennewick School District with a resolution, uh, from the Washington State House of Representatives. This is truly a joint venture. A citizen from Washington State asked me to, uh, draft this resolution, gave suggested language. It actually went through both the House Minority and Majority Caucus Lead Attorneys. Went through this with a fine tooth comb, came up with the agreed upon language, and it presented to the parents of the Kennewick School District who are participating in their school, their children's education at this time. House of Representatives Resolution, House Resolution Number 20224649, signed by Representatives Clifford, Chambers, Clicker, Binky. It's his mom's birthday tonight, he couldn't be there. Happy birthday to his mom. Representatives Chase, Graham, and Kraft. Whereas parental and familial involvement in their children's education promotes many positive and important results for children, schools, and communities. And whereas it is critical that the parents and families create a home environment that encourages learning, express high but not unrealistic expectations for their children's achievement and future careers, and to the extent they are able to become involved in their children's education at the school and in the community. And whereas, there's seven whereas's and one therefore. So we've got five more to go. Whereas students with involved parents and families are more likely to have higher grades and test scores, attend school regularly, have better social skills, show improved behavior, and adapt well to school. And whereas, work schedules and other factors may pose barriers to parental and familial involvement in schools, and identifying and tackling those barriers benefits students, parents, and our local schools. And whereas, when parents and families are willing and able to be involved at school and barriers to their participation come down, the performance of their children at school, not just their own, tends to improve. Research find, findings show the more comprehensive and well-planned the partnership between school and home to higher the student achievement. And whereas, when schools have a higher percentage of involved parents and families in and out of schools, teachers and principals are more likely to experience higher morale. There is enhanced communications and relations between parents, teachers, and administrators, and teachers and principals acquire a better understanding of families, cultures, and diversity. And whereas, schools and teachers can foster parental and familial involvement by assigning homework designed to increase student-parent interactions, holding workshops for families, and communicating to, communicating to parents and families about their children's education. Now therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives recognize that parents and families have an important and fundamental role in their children's upbringing and acknowledge and honor the parents and families of Washington State students and the many hours they've spent supporting their children's education, teachers, and school. I hereby certify this to be a true and correct copy of Resolution 4649, adopted by the House of Representatives, February 23rd, 2022, signed Bernard Dean, Chief Clerk, Washington State House of Representatives. And I'm hoping there might be a PTO or a PTA, uh, parent representative here tonight that I could present this to. Is that possible? Well, then if not, Madam Superintendent, may I present this, uh, House Resolution to you?
Absolutely. Thank you. On behalf of, um, our parents, I accept.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Okay, next speaker is Amanda Brown.
Good evening. I'm a teacher at, uh, Fuersa, fourth grade dual language. Um, Mr. Clifford actually came to my school last year when I invited him to speak when we were teaching our unit on Washington State government. So thank you for your community involvement. Um, my topic though tonight is to return to what I was addressing the board on in my last comments about a month or so ago concerning the sub shortage. It still continues to be an issue in our schools. Uh, at Fuersa today, we had no specials because all of our specialists were pulled to cover classes. I just hope that the board understands that just because COVID is becoming less of an issue, it is not affecting the sub shortage i- in a positive way. We still have, um, a lot of, of canceled specials. And, uh, the last time I talked, I compared the, the pay of a sub to the pay of a first year teacher, which even after the sub raised to $19 an hour, um, if we compare it to that of an average teacher, um, at the time of the strike four years ago, um, the average teacher in KSC was making $75,000, which is roughly, roughly about $55 an hour. And so if we just think fiscally, how much the district could be saving if we were to pay subs a little bit more and not pay teachers for that prep time that they are spending and the amount of money that could be saved. Also, I wanted to speak about equity in sub coverage because, um, I'd like to see, much like there was a spreadsheet at the last board meeting about volunteers at each school, about how, how many specials are being covered at schools at a higher socioeconomic level compared to those with students of a lower socioeconomic level? And see if the sub, um, this, when the subs are covering, if they, if all schools are experiencing this sub shortage or if it, um, if it affects more, if it affects lower socioeconomic schools than those that are, um, able to have a population of parents and volunteers who have their sub certification, who prefer to go to those schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker is Tina Gregory.
Thank you. It's so nice to see all your faces. This has been a long two years of totalitarian style leadership. I'm here tonight to ask some questions that I still haven't had answers to. What were all the COVID relief, what was all the COVID relief money spent on, and how much is left over? How can we give back any extra money? What steps have you started to stop any overreach from our governor in the future? What plans do you have to make sure our children aren't muzzled again? What steps are you taking to make sure these poisonous shots aren't forced on our children and staff? What steps are you taking to rid our schools of all pedophilia, pornography, and gender equality books? What steps are you taking to rid our schools of CRT, BLM, and any other unmoral agendas? Fousey has announced that lockdowns will be enforced in the fall due to variants. CDC has quietly removed over 70,000 COVID deaths. Mandates are not laws, and our schools need to never follow them again. Our public school's job is to educate our children, not indoctrinate them. There still is a lot of very hard issues right now, and I don't see how levies will pass without some kind of commitment from this board. We do not want our children forced to wear masks again. There needs to be policies that keeps transgenders out of girls' and boys' bathroom. We need to keep all children morally safe. Our world is in the middle of an evil battle. People are trying to call evil good and good evil. This is biblical. Isaiah 5:20, woe to those who call evil good and good evil. Woe to, um, who put darkness for light and light for darkness, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter. Woe to those who are wise in their own eyes and prudent in their own sight. Romans 8, because the carnal mind is eternally against God, for it is not subject to the laws of God, nor indeed can be. Deuteronomy, uh, 12, take heed for yourself that you are not ensnared to follow them. It's time we all stand up to this evil. It's time we stop pushing unmoral agendas in our schools. It's time we rid our schools of evil and bring back God and morals. I know this can't happen overnight, but it needs to happen. I will continue to be here and ask these tough questions and ready, uh, ready to stand against any more overreach for our childrens.
Thank you. So we have three people on the phone to speak this evening. Is that correct? Maybe? All right, we're gonna go, give us one more second here, see if we can't get them connected to the system. Just push buttons randomly. That's what I would do. Perfect. Mrs. Davis, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Wonderful. Please. Yeah, I, you know, I knew that was coming, so thank you for calling me out. Okay, JoJo, whenever you're ready.
All right. Okay. I can hear you. All right, I am gonna say whereas lots, lots of times, so you have given me as much time as I need, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you call me Clifford Junior.
There you go.
All right. First off, I just wanted to make sure people don't get me wrong. Highland is not a negative place. We have our struggles. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't get me wrong, Highland is not a negative place. We have our struggles, but we also have things to celebrate. First, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen, and a special thank you to those that have visited our school. It is not going unnoticed that you have taken these steps. We had our first APT family night last night. It was the Focus on Science, and we had 140 people here at Highland. Twelve families were online. It was a great celebration, with hopefully more to come. Tonight, the reason why I'm not there is tonight we have our incoming sixth graders who will be coming here to visit and hear the great things here at Highland. We're excited to be planning for next year while being in the throes of this year. Please help us in looking at ways we can continue to enhance our school so that students and parents experience all that the KSC has to offer. Let's do all we can to reduce the have and have nots and give all students the same opportunity. KSC should represent, fund, and support all schools, not equally, but give to those what they need, some more, some less, because let's face it, not all schools have the same needs. Thank you so much for always listening to me, and I look forward to hearing about your vision as a district for schools throughout the district and in the coming year. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you, JoJo. Okay, who's our next speaker? Elida Alvarez. Wonderful. Ms. Alvarez?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Wonderful. Please start. When you get up, whenever you'd like. Ms. Alvarez, we're ready for you.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. We're ready to, ready to go when you are.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, we're ready to go. Please, please start.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Elida Alvarez, and I am a teacher at Fuersa Elementary. I am speaking today in regards to the substitute shortage we are facing within our school and our school district. Actually, I want to ask the board and the district administration about what steps they are taking to retain substitutes or attract qualified people to substitute in our district. Our school, along with many other title one schools, have been struggling trying to find substitutes to cover for our teachers, which leads to our specialists having to cancel their specials to cover in those classrooms. Our students have not had a full week of specials in months, and this has impacted them crazy. Not only are, are our students affected, but also us as teachers. We have not been able to have our planning time or office hours to communicate with parents, attend meetings, or create materials for our instruction time, which leads to us working late or even on weekends. The district has provided teachers an additional $30 for their missed prep. However, that has been taken away from us, and we are no longer provided this incentive. So my last question to the district is, if you have taken this incentive from us teachers, have you also taken away the increased payments you said you would offer to our substitutes? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker. Good evening, Mr. Alvarez.
Uh, hello? Are you guys, uh, ready or?
We're ready. Please start.
All right, good evening. Um, I am a parent of, of two, of two students from the Kennewick School District. And I just wanted to, uh, address my concern about the lack of, uh, kids not going to specials. I know my, my kids always look sad because like they only go on one, like probably about once a week. Like my, my child only attended specials about, like, once per week in the, in the, every, uh, school year. Um, and another thing is like, uh, why is the school always asking for money for levies and the kids don't get a chance to use these equipments? Like, like, uh, computers or equipment, they don't even get to use them. Because especially to be, uh, settling in classrooms, my daughters, daughters, all students in your lower income schools are not getting the opportunity to learn other things and experience like PE, music, technology, or library because of the lack of teachers. As a concerned parent, I'm here to ask the board to please investigate how the money is being used in the district and to please look into hiring more teachers that can work in, in schools. Or if we don't have the, the teachers, um, uh, substitutes distribute them evenly so that all our students can have a fair education and go back to have the opportunity to attend their specials with their specialists. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes communications from parents, staff, and district residents. Okay, that concludes communications from parent staff and district residents. Thank you, Clipper. Uh, okay, uh, next on the agenda, uh, the consent items.
I move to approve consent items as written.
Okay, you have a motion to accept them. You have a second?
I second.
First and second. Uh, Patty, call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvic?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
I don't know if we might have lost him.
Um, he said there's a, he's experiencing a slight delay.
Mr. Mayberry? He texted yes.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Connors?
Gotta love technology. Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, the superintendent and the board member reports. We'll start off with Dr. Pierce.
There it is. Okay. I wanted to take a few minutes during superintendent report tonight to provide an update on our communication information campaign for the upcoming levy. And so, um, I'm just gonna bring up a few slides to share as a part of this tonight. And here we go. Okay. Um, I won't, I won't take, take the board through the entire slideshow, but there are a couple of things I did want to highlight as part of the new updated levy presentation that we'll be sharing with the community. And all of the information contained in this slideshow will also be on our district website very soon and will be part of the information that we share at the upcoming open houses. So that's where I'd like to start. My PowerPoint will cooperate. There we go. So, uh, as we talked about at some of the previous meetings and during the study session with, with the board, uh, one of the things we want to increase is communications and information to people. So we've got three upcoming open houses, uh, on the calendar that we're gonna start communicating about after tonight. The first one's March 31st. It's during the daytime. Um, and then we have two evening sessions scheduled in April, uh, right after spring break. And so these are open house-style information sessions. Um, board members are welcome, uh, to come. What we'll do is we'll have, uh, an opportunity for people to, um, interact with, uh, staff members, um, get their specific questions answered, and then there'll be a levy presentation. Some of it you're gonna see here in just a minute that will be, um, scheduled as part of that. We haven't quite, so it's more of an open house format. People can come. They'll know when the presentation will be. It'll be about 15-minute, 20-minute presentation. Um, they're welcome to come and hear the presentation and leave, or just come, um, at any time during that one hour to just get their specific questions answered and interact with staff and any board members that are present. And, uh, we haven't really figured out a childcare, uh, strategy yet, but children are welcome to come. It's an open house format, and, um, people can certainly bring their children with them, and we'll have translation services available as well. So some of the important things that we'll be sharing, and again, I'm not gonna take you through the whole presentation tonight, but, um, it's an opportunity for us to talk about our strategic plan as a district, our mission, vision, and goals, and then make the connection between how those levy dollars are used and help us accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, um, for our, our students. Uh, most importantly, also for our staff and our families and our community. So we'll get into that. I'm just clicking through a couple of things to highlight here, but it'll give us a chance to talk a bit about our strategic plan and the annual progress report that we share with the community every year. I'm clicking through these things. We'll also, of course, talk about, um, then, you know, how, again, we rely on levy funding as a school district because it helps us bridge the gap between the funding we receive from the state and the funding that we actually need. And, uh, we'll go through, uh, currently how, um, those levy dollars and that additional state funding that we receive, if we can pass our levy, how those help us, um, provide the services and staffing and programs that we have for our students and what that looks like in terms of our current year budget. So some of this information was included because it hasn't changed, um, since, uh, the February levy, but many things have changed. And as the board knows, and we shared at a previous, uh, meeting, because that levy that we ran in February fell short of passing by, uh, about 1%, we surveyed the community to get more information about what the potential concerns were about that. Board had a study session, um, actually prior to that. And then, um, we used that information from the board and from the community to develop a new updated plan. And that new levy, uh, the board unanimously supported and voted to put on the ballot in April. And so that's coming up, um, here, April 26th. We'll share and go through a little bit of that community feedback that the board, you've already seen this, but we'll share that with the community as, uh, part of the presentation. We'll highlight the things that have changed, the fact that we have gone from what was a four-year levy plan in February to now a two-year levy plan with, um, lower amounts and lower rates. Um, and also just highlight, again, the feedback that we received and how we're trying to enhance the communication about the levy. Um, the mailer that communications is producing right now and finalizing has, uh, quite a bit of detailed information. We're trying to, you know, provide as much detail and, uh, information for people as possible and highlight all the things that have changed since February, and then also highlight those things that have stayed the same. Um, what has stayed the same is our need for the local community support. And we heard, you know, some great sports programs highlighted tonight. Um, that's, those programs are levy funded, and so we want to continue to help people understand how we do rely, not just our district, but, but all districts in our state really do rely on community support to provide the kind of programs that we have for our, our students. And we'll touch on, of course, because the question always comes up, well, now what happens if the levy doesn't pass? We're only allowed to, to run a levy two times in a calendar year. And so, uh, the levy didn't pass in February. This is our second chance in this calendar year. Um, and if it, you know, so the question's gonna come up, what happens if it doesn't pass? And the reality is, if the levy doesn't pass, the only option we really have is to look at reducing, uh, programs and staffing. And, you know, Vic will take us through, I think this is probably, you know, we, we pretty much do a budget presentation at almost every board meeting this time of year, and so he'll touch on all the specific, uh, financial pieces, uh, highlight what the, what the ballot looks like, so this is just a snapshot of what people will see on the ballot. They'll see that two-year levy, those levy amounts and rates, uh, and, um, just that one proposition won this time around. We'll go through, um, specifically, again, all the kinds of things that are levy funded and how much of those levy funds are allocated to each of these, uh, categories. So I'm, I'm clicking fast just for your, uh, uh, information tonight. Well, also, there was some, um, question about the prototypical funding model, and we talk about that a lot as we, um, are presenting budget information to the board. And there's, and in the legislative session, there was a lot of talk about the prototypical funding model. And that's that, how the state allocates dollars to districts, and then how we, as districts, take that money and utilize it to hire staff. And so, um, there have been questions about how much of certain, um, people and full-time equivalencies or F T E are funded by the state, and then what is specifically that gap that the district has to fill? So nurses is always a good example, and I was, you know, just rounding up in the last round of levy presentations to three. But this shows real specifically, it'll be on the mailer, be part of the presentation, that the state funds us for 2.82 F T E nurses. We have fit, we fund 15.98 F T E nurses from our levy and L E A funds. So when you add those two together, that gives you our total nurse F T E staffing, and it shows you real concretely which parts state-funded and which parts levy-funded. We'll, of course, go through what the levy costs, um, have the updated examples based on the new lower levy rates, um, and show some specific property, uh, examples, like we did last time, but based on the new rates. Um, we're also doing a, a little bit more of a comparison to other districts so people get an idea of where we, where we land in comparison to our neighbors. So when you look at our tax rates, um, you can see that we're, we're on the lower end. Um, we're, uh, first year of the levy is a dollar seventy-five, and you can see that, um, Kybe's a little lower than us. Pasco's the same, and then a number of districts in our area have a higher levy rate. And it's just a good, um, piece of data so people understand where, where we are in comparison. And then we'll go through kind of the updated total tax rate, uh, and that was, and highlight the difference between bonds and levies. And of course, always take the opportunity to thank our community for their support for past measures. And, um, another thing that we're gonna highlight in addition to the dates and so forth is, and this isn't quite built out yet, but, you know, we've heard, uh, it alluded to tonight in different ways, uh, the importance of having families in our schools and the fact that we appreciate and want families in our schools. We want to provide those volunteer opportunities. Uh, we spent a lot of time at the last board meeting, presenting information, hearing feedback from the board, and discussing the importance of family involvement. So when we talk about support for our schools, it's not just about money and ballot measures. It's, it's also about partnering with families to ensure that we're providing the best education that we can for students and that that involvement is authentic and there's those opportunities for engagement. So we thought it would be a nice opportunity in these open houses to highlight some of that, too, and really how we're trying to strengthen this community-family connection. So that was real quick, and I just wanted to kind of give you essentially an overview, um, let you know about those open houses coming, and then just highlight some of the big things we plan to highlight in the levy presentation those nights and in our communications to the community.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
I, I, I don't know if you can hear me. I do have a question.
We can hear you.
A-actually, it's a point of procedure, and, and I'm only interjecting because I want to make sure we do things right. I don't think I can vote via, uh, text. I think I have to. So my, my vote for is the, for the consent item was yes, and I said it verbally, but of course you couldn't hear it. So I, I just want to make sure that it's not a text. It's a real vote, yes.
I didn't figure anyone would hack in to, you know, vote yes for you on the school board, so, but thank you for clarifying that. Perfect. Yes.
So I know today, or I think it came yesterday, um, a community member wrote that the mailer came late to them. And I know I heard that from several other people, too, because I know we put our ballot back in the day that it comes. And so some people got it with, you know, within a few days of the ballots being due. So will we be able to get that out just a smidge earlier to people?
I, I will find that email and send it to you, but I know ours came after we'd already got ours in, but we vote early. But I know a lot of people said.
Robin, Robin, I'm just gonna ask you, because if you talk from there, no, the people online and things can't hear you. No, it's okay. Um, so, uh, either, I can take that feedback, Ms. Sunvic, and I can, Rob- Robin and I have been meeting about the mailer, and we can look at the timeline and so forth. Or we could have Robin come up. Either.
That's fine. I, you answered.
Okay. Uh, just real quick, you mentioned, uh, daycare in the evenings. I'm wondering, maybe, Zach, maybe you can help us out here. Maybe we've got some great A S P leaderships at schools or Run Cano or Blue Crew or some people looking for volunteer high school students that want to come and pitch in, just an idea. Just throwing it out there.
They totally got hooked you in there. That was awesome.
Um, I am sure that if, uh, there's lots of groups that would love to step up for something like that, especially because the levy has such an impact in our schools. Um, I don't know. I guess we can brainstorm that moving forward.
Just putting it out there.
No, no, I like it.
Perfect. Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zach? Whatever makes you, whatever makes you happy.
Uh, I'll stay here just quickly. Um, so I got the opportunity, like a few other board members, uh, it was a pretty unique opportunity to, to judge. I think, is it Top Chef? Is that the name?
Future Chefs.
Future Chefs, uh, which is, uh, where, uh, we work with our nutrition provider to do a competition, uh, with a, a bunch of the local elementary schools. And they, uh, different students got to, uh, cook. And I thought, one thing that really stood out to me about the program was that it was tri-tech students in the culinary school met, so students helping teach younger students. Um, and so just a super unique opportunity that I was super honored to be asked to be a part of. Um, I think the thing that was most full circle about it, though, was after I did it, when I was telling some kids, I had two different people tell me, oh, I did that in elementary school. That was one of my highlights, or, or that was, so lots of, after I did it, I also had lots of kids coming back to me talking about the fact that they did it. And so I, I, just super cool program and super cool to be, uh, offered to be a part of it, so thank you. I did the Vwasta Student Rep, uh, Network. Uh, we finalized the guidance that I keep telling you we've been working on. Um, and so I think they're gonna do a round with the graphic designer. Um, and then when I get the final version, I'll provide that to Dr. Pierce, any board members want it, I can pass it on as well. Um, I know, uh, I'm pretty excited for it because it's, uh, a lot of school districts do not have student rep positions, and it is a tool that a lot of districts will be able to use to, uh, more easily create this position and improve student voice at the school board level across Washington. But also for these school districts that already have a student rep in place, you can look at, oh, what's this district doing and what other districts are doing kind of from that guidance. So, so super excited about the culmination of that work. Um, and then, uh, that's, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Gabe?
Yeah, so like Zach, um, I was able to attend the Future Chefs event, uh, amazing event. Um, I think he hit the, the nail on the head there with that, so, um, that was great. Visited schools with, uh, Micah. We went to South Ridge and Lincoln, um, on Monday, the 14th, just to get ideas, see how everybody was doing with the, the new mask choice. Uh, it was great to see so many students smiling and, um, having a good time. And so that was, uh, it was great to visit those schools. Uh, I attended the Highland Springs Sports Day, um, that we were invited to, and, uh, got to see the, the kids there doing their tryout and, uh, ran into Mike there, and we chatted a little bit. Um, I did, I was told after Mike, I stayed a little bit, talked to the baseball coach. So they were in, uh, need of some mitts and some baseball pants there at Highlands. And so, um, we had a few community members step up, and I have about 14 or 15 mitts in my garage and about 20 pairs of baseball pants, so I'm gonna be getting those to Highlands here, uh, hopefully tomorrow. And I think the highlight of, uh, the last couple of weeks is I attended the, the Math is Cool Award Ceremony, um, last Friday night. And, um, big shout out to Ammon Creek Cottonwood and Vista, their fourth and fifth grades, represented and, and brought home a ton of, um, individual placing and team placing. And I will just tell you that that place was rockin'. It was like a football game on a Friday. I kid you not. I, they were stomping the bleachers and clapping and cheering, and it was an amazing, um, award ceremony to go to. I'm not quite sure what they did to get the awards because we couldn't attend the competition, but, um, i- it's an amazing program, and, and I look forward to working with, um, Linda on that and, and kind of looking at that in the future and seeing what that looks like, because it, it's a great program, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Micah, you have any?
Yeah, um, just wanted to, uh, thank Brian Levitt for, for meeting with me. I actually met with him a, a little while ago, but I forgot to mention it, so just want to thank him for that. Um, I was really interested about the hiring of teachers and counselors, still am. That's a, that's still an issue, and, um, I know there's some budget concerns about that, but, um, definitely want to look into that more, and I'm gonna continue that. It was very nice to see the, see the kids at school, at the schools with their masks off. Um, I just have a couple of questions, Trace, if you could, does yes or no for these for me? I know I'm not, probably not supposed to do this right now, but I do it anyway. One more, maybe I'll just say them. Um, kids shouldn't, kids should not be forced to wear masks. Uh, there shouldn't be any surveys taking place about masks. We should not have, wear your mask on, on message boards or leaderboards. It shouldn't be signed. Um, and we should not be handing out masks. Um, so I just want to make that as a way of clarification. And then the last thing is, um, there are a couple of schools that definitely are in need of clothes and shoes. Um, I donate all, all that I had, but I, they definitely have a need. So, um, clothes and shoes, there are certain, some, certain schools who need that. And, and, um, people can reach out to me or Tracy, whoever, we can steer in the right direction, so that's all.
Thank you.
So, Micah, I can tell you what they do to earn those awards, because I did get a chance before I came today to go online to, to do the Math is Cool, which, um, our district's been involved in for quite a few years. So it's a, I am not a math person, and I tell people that all the time. I'm an A B C person as a speech therapist. So they had to do, the first part was mental math. I failed. It was fifth grade. And, um, And they they have to do it very fast, and they they were doing it in the schools. It's still virtual. And they were doing it with their teacher, so the teacher was supervising them. But it's very quick paced, and those brains are working, I'll tell you. And then next, that was individual. And then next, it was the team group, and I only got to get a little bit of that before I had to leave. But very impressive and slightly daunting to some of us who are not math majors. But I was very, very, very impressed. And there's another one coming next Wednesday, which will also be virtual, so we can all attend that if we wish to do so. So those kids are amazing. And I will also say that Linda coaches the Kamaiakon students, who like Zach was talking about, the Kamaiakon students then mentor our elementary students. So it's pretty cool to see how that all works its way down. Like Gabe and Zach, I was at the Future Chef. Another thing I have to mention, and I may cry, there was a little boy named Chef David. That guy is, he just has my heart. So he was a fifth grader last year. Unfortunately, he's in Richland now, but he won last year, and he was back this year, and he has this little black, the winner wins this black chef coat. And he was very, very proud of that. And he told us, no one touches my chef jacket. And I said, do you let your mom wash it? Well, yes, I let her wash it. But nobody touches my chef jacket. And he was so cute. And he, well, he couldn't decide how he was going to vote, and he was so very professional. And I just love that child. So he's going to be on TV someday, I know that. But the whole thing was very cool, and all the kids were great. And Liam Ross was the winner from our district, but they were all winners, I thought. I've been to two WASDA weekly networking webinars. The last one was a legislative session overview, excuse me. And then the Tri-City Coalition for Racial Equity and Social Justice has its monthly meeting, Key Connections, which is our partner with the Benton Franklin Health Department, a few other social service agencies. I got to listen to parts of the Richland School District Board meeting last night. And I know I'm missing one. Oh, and as your legislative rep today, I watched the signing. Governor Inslee kind of puts things in pods, and so today was some of the educational signing. So our enrollment back to the 2019, 2020. So we will receive a little extra money for that. The social emotional learning staff, which we will hopefully get some extra staff that Dr. Pierce was showing us up there. This hopefully will help with our subs shortage. Retirees can come back without losing benefits to sub and/or teach. Language access bill, which I'm pretty proud of, for students who speak another language who are deaf and use ASL or blind and use Braille, they passed some funding to access interpreters for those students. And so this goes along with the the food service online sign up for families with low income because we no longer have to sign up for food service, but that affects ASB and lots of other things. So they're making some things to happen so everybody gets it. And the last one was the outdoor education grant. So maybe some of our students will get opportunities to spend weeks in the outdoors for classes and credit.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ron, do you have anything to share with us?
Just one thing, I just want to say I told you so about the Future Chefs.
Should have been there.
Nah.
That's great. Thank you. And I'll jump in here real quick. As Gabe said, I did go to the Highlands the first day of their spring sports, and they had a great turnout there. Baseball team had, what they have 40, they had to have 40, 40 kids. The the girls softball team had well over 30. The track team, they were a little disappointed, I think they only had about 15 kids turning out for track, but the coaches were great and they said, we're happy to see them, and we're going to do the best of what we have and go forward. And secondly, tonight, I'd like to thank Sam and his team from Sodexo for feeding us. They were very kind to feed the board as well as staff. That was wonderful. Thank you very much for doing that for us. It's always wonderful, and we missed it the last couple of years, especially me. I love I love free food. So anyway, so thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is unfinished business. We have the adoption of Action Plan School Drinking Water. Mr. Jones.
Nope. Wait.
Oh, reports and discussion, what'd I do? Oh, God, I jumped ahead.
Yeah.
I'm trying to move this along. Reports and discussion. What, whatever.
Hi, Ron.
I'm sorry. Exactly. I was writing, I apologize. Mr., I, you know, you feed me and then I ignore you. Do you know what I am? Mr. Schick is going to talk to us about nutrition services.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity tonight to give a presentation on our nutrition services program from last year. And really excited to be here tonight. This is my 30th school year in Kennewick. It's hard to believe I've been around that long, but it's it's an honor to serve you. Sam Schick, Nutrition Services Director for the district and for Sodexo. With me tonight is Renee Ceruto, she's district manager with Sodexo, as well as Cory McFadden, Operations Manager, and Audrey Brand, my field supervisor, Assistant Director. Christine Benson can be here this evening. She had another obligation, but we're happy here to talk a little bit about our year last year. So we're going to talk a little bit to begin with about our meal sample from tonight that you enjoyed before the meeting today. We'll talk about a student advisory council that Zach participated in earlier this year, as well as nutrition requirements in order for the district to be reimbursed for meals. We'll talk a little bit about that to give you some information on that. We'll review revenues and expenses from last school year, look at some grant funding that we landed last year, look at some meal count comparisons, do an update on the community eligibility provision that some of you might not be aware of, and finish up, Diane, by seeing a quick video of our friend David Herrera's submission on the virtual Future Chef from last year. Your sample today, the meal that you had, is part of our Taste Four program in the high schools here in Kennewick. We offer this each month. Most recently, at the end of February, we had this build your own ramen bowl, part of Rockin' Ramen. Zach tells me that he's had that in Kennewick High School before and enjoyed it with other students. So it's just a sampling of the kinds of things that we offer that are innovative in our nutrition program here in Kennewick. We offered the same meal at a student advisory board meeting that we were invited to by Dr. Pierce on October the 6th. We asked them some focus group type questions. You can see them on the slide. I'm not going to go through each one, but I wanted to kind of give you a flavor for the kinds of questions that we asked them during that meeting. And we took away some really important, you know, anecdotal information from this conversation that we had. There were about two or three students, I think, Zach, from every high school in Kennewick. And we asked them, you know, those questions, and some of the things we took away were what they liked about our service. They liked our staff. And who doesn't like an awesome lunch lady, right? Because they're like another mom or another grandma. So so they loved the the folks that work in our department and serve meals. They like the convenience of the meal programs at the high school level. There are lots of options. They appreciated the variety that we offer. They like the speed of service, which has really been helped by us serving everyone free the past couple of years with clickers. That makes it very fast. And they like the fact that meals were free last year as well. Because of the pandemic, we had USDA waivers that allowed us to serve all those meals at no cost to students. Some areas for improvement that they like to see or changes they'd like to see more vegetarian options, think they're no different than the rest of the population, a lot more people are interested in a vegetarian diet. They want to see a wider variety of ethnic choices and tea and coffee. So I could use some coffee right about now, you know, it's getting that time of night. To to kind of give you some perspective on how Kennewick School District receives funding for the meals that we serve to cover labor costs, benefits and food costs and other expenses, we need to meet certain what are called meal pattern requirements. We need to offer a certain menu that includes five different components with every lunch that we serve. One of the components is protein. We need to have a low fat protein. Usually, it's in the entree, and we offer eight to 10 ounces of that protein per week. It varies based on the age. You'll see some different ranges up here. It just depends on the age of the student. We also have to offer milk, low fat and fat-free milk, one cup daily. So we have to provide a variety of options. We have to offer a variety of different subgroups of vegetables. Subgroups are things like dark greens and orange or reds, things like that. And so we have to offer a certain amount of that per every week. There are a minimum amount of fruit to offer, about a half to a full cup of fruit every week or every day, excuse me. And then finally, our our bread need to be made with whole grain products and one to two ounces on average per day. That's what we have to menu, okay? Students don't have to take all this food because it would just probably, a lot of it might go in the garbage because not everybody likes everything on the menu. Offer versus serve is a program that allows us to, that they they choose the different things that they want to have on their plate. They have to have three of the five items on their plate, and three of those five items have to be at least a half a cup of fruit and/or vegetable. We also have to meet some other requirements from a nutrient perspective, a certain number of calories, a minute, a maximum number of calories from saturated and regular fats, and a certain amount of sodium you can't exceed on the menu. And the menu also has to be trans fat free.
Sam, I'm going to interrupt you for one second.
Yes.
Can you go back one?
Sure.
So the weekly average calorie is 550, 850 calories a week?
A day.
Thank you. Okay, I'm like.
So so you can have a lower, a higher number of calories on Monday and a lower amount of calories on Tuesday. The average for the week has to be between 550 and 850, depending on the age of the student.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. This is more detail on on what I just talked about. I summarized it on that page. But it kind of gives you an idea for the different components required and the age groups. And this is, we make sure, you know, we ensure that there's compliance by having a nutritionist review our menus every month. We run all this information through a software program that identifies the number of calories and calories from fat, et cetera. In addition to that, the state leads an administrative review every three years. The pandemic put a pause on that for a year or two. Will be reviewed next year. But they come and do a thorough review, looking at the foods that you're serving and the and the records that prove you're serving those foods to receive the reimbursement for the meals that you've claimed on the state claim. The meal service last year was different than what we usually see. And one of the primary differences was the type of program we received funding through is a summer food service program. We did that because there's more flexibility with that program. For example, we don't have to serve the variety of subgroups that we do in the regular national school lunch program, as I just mentioned. And also, it's, there were other, you receive more money per every meal that you serve with a summer food service program. USDA offered that to be able to cover some of the challenges to operating during the pandemic. So so last year, using the summer food service program, we served meals at no cost to kids at the beginning of the year from buses. We had a conversation with Dr. Pierce early in the year. We had hundreds of bus stops we dropped food off at at the during the morning. They got their breakfast and their lunch together every day. We offered then, when we moved to hybrid learning, where kids were in class on the on the site two days a week and home the other three days a week. We offered a hybrid meal service. We served the kids in the building. We offered a five-day meal kit for those kids that weren't, you know, for the other days of the week. The pandemic waivers allowed us to serve multiple meals on a given day and offer meal kits on days when there was no school and on the weekends. That helped us recover from some of the meal losses that we had due to kids not being in the building. We offered seven-day meal kits at middle schools when middle schools and high schools were closed, for families could go on to our Google Sheet and place an order. And our staff would would be there serving those meals curbside. And then if families couldn't be there to pick up meals during, at the middle schools on those, that day of the week on a Wednesday afternoon, we offered two locations where they could come later in the in the evening instead if they had to work during the day so that we had people that couldn't make it the other time. And then finally, we were able to open regular meal services for all students in April, which was a giant relief. It was a little bit different than what you'd see in a normal, normal school year, but it was really great to get back to that in April. So we did see some, our meal numbers drop. This year, we're expected to do about 2.9 million meals. But last year, we were still able to do 2.2 million meals. And we're able to afford to do that. We had a lot of employee attrition due to the pandemic. We were down 35 people at one point. But those costs came in at lower than budget, so it allowed us to be able to continue fiscally sound. Speaking of which, I'm going to go over a quick slide here on revenues and expenses. The pie here normally has a few more colors on it. You can see it's mostly federal revenue, and that's pretty standard for a given year. We receive most of our funding in federal revenues. But we also receive a larger piece of the pie in state revenue and some local cash for meal sales and all cart sales. So last year, the regular revenue, we received about $7.8 million in revenue, but an additional $374,000 in pandemic funding. So you can see there on the slide, the revenue minus expenditures, there's a negative number there, but when you account for the $374,000 in emergency revenues for during the pandemic, we did return a surplus to the district for our department last year. Expenses in a normal year, labor is about half of the pie. You can see it's quite a bit more. Last year, food costs is the second highest number. Then you've got other operating costs for paper, chemicals, and services like garbage pickup and those kinds of things, pest control. And so those overall revenues just short of $8 million. So that was our our total financial picture in general for last school year. We also received some grant funding. We won $77,000 in grants from a No Kid Hungry program. We were able to buy some meal coolers that allowed us to store food. When we had these, all these meal kits that were going out together, expanded the amount of room we had to store those, that food in those meal kits. And it paid for some non-standard mealtime service staffing, like that Thursday afternoon or evening program. We bought some point of service signs, masks and rain gear for our employees who had to work outside. I can't tell you what an amazing job our staff did. I mean, they were the first ones serving meals when this thing started, and I'm so proud of the job they did, including my team, too. We really worked hard to serve the community. I'm really super proud of them. So getting them rain gear and masks was an easy call to make. A bagging equipment for the meal kits and paper products that are non-standard to a typical meal program we bought with that grant funding. This kind of shows you our average daily participation by different meal type. And remember that in 1920, things changed in March, so we stopped traditional meal service. And then in 2021, we'd started from completely virtual on to almost normal toward the end of the year. So you do see a dramatic decrease in the average daily participation by meal type. But again, the financial picture turned out really positively for the district last year. We also have revenue during the summer. When the pandemic started, we had a huge summer program because there were a lot of kids counting on those meals. We were able to serve during the summer. It's $673,000 in in the summer of '20. In the summer of '21, we still ended up bringing in $472,000 in revenue from those meal sales. It was quite a bit less than the previous year, but still more than the about $275,000, $300,000 that we see in a typical summer during a normal year. But again, those summer revenues helped helped us with the overall picture. One thing that has been a changing over the years has been something called the community eligibility provision. Diane alluded to it earlier with the meal applications for free and reduced meals. A CEP allows you to serve meals at no cost to students, but have a high percentage of students that qualify for things like food stamps. And so the district has been able to apply for added schools each of the last six years, I think, Vic. And we've increased the number of eligible schools. We'll look at the list here in just a minute. But as as Vic and I sit down in the spring to consider whether we expand the program, and we look at it to make sure that it's cost neutral or better to the district and that we reach a higher percentage of students in these communities that really need it. And so over the years, we started with three in 2016 to kind of see how it would work. It worked out very well for us. We added seven, and now we've added a total of 20 buildings overall for the CEP program where meals are served free to all students. Now, obviously, with the pandemic, all kids are getting meals for free. Anyway, I would also add that there is legislation that was just passed in the state of Washington that will allow, and I think Zach mentioned in a previous board meeting, any buildings at 40% direct certification or higher can receive meals for free for all students. So Vic and I will sit down with Tracy and look at that data for next year to consider expanding to other buildings potentially for next year, and we'll talk to you at another date about that. This is the young man that that Diane was talking about, David Herrera. He's so awesome. We couldn't do a regular Future Chef program like we did this year, so we did a virtual program. We had, I don't know, about a dozen virtual entrants. They sent us a video. I'm going to show you a snippet of David's video. You're going to love it. Just a 45 second clip of, of his entry. So they were completely virtually, the famous Fiesta fit, healthy Mexican cuisine. David's recipe, recipe was En Vuelto de Pollo, which he'll pronounce much better than I do. It's a chicken wrap and he was our winner from last year. So I thought I'd finish up my presentation tonight before I ask for questions with a video from David, just a quick 45 second video here.
Hi, I'm David Herrera and I'm representing Vista Elementary School. Today I'll be making my recipe, which is called.
And that's David, Chef David Herrera. He's just a great kid. He really had a lot of fun at our, at our event. I usually end up with a little comic here for you to enjoy as a food related comic as entertain any questions that you might have about our program.
Questions, thoughts? It looks like everyone's leaning forward.
I do have some questions.
I just, I wanted to say thank you for finding David because David's not with us in, in our district anymore. And so thank you so much for finding him. He made a comment to me how much that meant to him to come back, that you guys looked for him. And you know, he's had a few family issues and so it was very important to him that he still had that connection. So he was very thankful. So thank you for doing that.
Rixon School District also has Sedexo Services and they do the same program. In fact, theirs was a week prior. So students originally can participate as well.
I, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for all the hard work these last two years. It's, it's been crazy work for you guys and just thank you for making it happen and serving the community and our students. So please let everyone know, thank you.
So I got just a couple of questions. That may be like continuation from what we talked about a little bit inside, whenever you're eating your awesome rumbles. So I know that, that you guys have a, a certain nutritional value you have to maintain, right? And then you submit that and then that, that has to do with the, with the money being reimbursed, right? So my question is like, I mean, you, we talked about corn dogs, right? I mean, I, there's nobody loves a good corn dog more than me, but the nutritional value isn't always the best, right? But you mentioned that you're, that, that your corn dogs potentially have a better, a little better nutritional value. And so I'm kind of wondering like maybe what goes into that and can we increase that even more? I mean, cause I, when I do visit the school, I'm always there at lunch and I do appreciate that I feel like that they are having the kids take vegetables every, every time or, or cups of fruit or whatever, you know? And so I really think that's great. I do appreciate that. But there are still, you know, and there's a lot of, there's still some processed food, which, you know, it's not quite as good as Whole Foods, you know, especially with meats and proteins. And so I just kind of want to talk about like that a little bit, like the processed meat. Is there a way to kind of, is there a way to kind of get full meats instead of a processed meat or is there a way to, to exceed, to, to push the envelope a little bit higher for nutritional value? I mean, especially in the light of COVID, you know, you had, we, we lost 11 kids in our state and all 11 of them had four or more comorbidities. And so if we can kind of re, improve the health of the community, then, then we can have, we can be safer potentially if something else comes along, so.
Yeah. So you asked about the process. So, you know, we, we rely on our vendors to come up with creative ways to improve the nutrition of, of the processed items that we serve. Your question though about Whole Foods, you absolutely can do that. I, I think as I, as I said in our conversation, you know, salt, solvent for three. Kids need to like it. It needs to meet the nutritional requirements and then there's a cost element too as well. So, so it's that cost piece that, that needs to be considered. And if that's the direction the district wants to go, we can certainly pursue that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would. And the other thing I noticed is like, is I know that I, I don't know this, but I think, I think a lot of food kind of gets, it doesn't get used, right? Or gets thrown away or something like that, right? So, so, I mean, obviously, you know, you're talking about costs and you're talking about also throwing away lots and lots and lots of food. So is there a way we can kind of reformulate that so that we have little tighter amounts of food and better, higher quality food to kind of compensate for that?
Yeah, we're, we're constantly looking at, at ways to improve our projections for the number of meals that we serve. Certainly overproduction is an issue that, that you're always constantly addressing and reviewing with production records and working with staff on that. And then there are other ways to reduce waste. One, one way is the sharing table, a term that's used in, in our, our business, which we haven't done due to COVID, but basically, you know, if two students come up and one student takes an apple and really doesn't want to eat an apple, but I gotta have some fruit with my plate, they can put it on the sharing table and other students can have that apple that might need it. So that's another way that you can reduce waste.
But is that, is that a way for the kid to kind of like get around eating that apple?
Yep. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. But the question is, you know, what, what?
Only throw it away, which is, yeah, it's better than, I, I agree. It's better to reshare certainly.
What can we provide that the student would eat?
Yeah.
That, that they would like, that meets the nutritional requirements and that is the right cost. Yeah.
Yeah. No, so, so I mean, I get all that and I'm not, and I, I'm by no way criticizing you guys. You guys do a fantastic job. I'm not doing that at all. I, I'm just trying to find a way to just continue to push that envelope to, for, you know, higher quality meals, better nutrition, you know? So just, I just kind of encourage you to do that and I'd really like to kind of maybe have you think about maybe, you know, I can follow up some, sometime about the processed food piece versus real food piece versus the wasting, the wasteful, you know, food and all that kind of stuff. And I think that's really important to me. And I love the veggies and the, and the, or the fruit, you know, cups, you know, that's really good. So those are just kind of my things. So maybe we can follow up with that some other time offline.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Perfect. Ron, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I do have a question or maybe a comment in that good points I might have, but also want to make sure that we keep diversity in mind when we're talking about the food menu also. And not everyone eats the same family of food and our kids need to be like Michael said, properly nourished, but also keeping in mind the different types of food that people enjoy.
Thank you, Ron. And that was certainly feedback we received from, from our group that Zach participated in, the focus group.
Yes.
And I was going to go on to the ethnic food. I think you and I have talked about this in Seattle and again, I don't remember the name, the, it's an African stew that is meatless, but it has a lot of protein to it. And if there's meat in Africa, then you would add it. And that's something that the African families really ask for and that's become a very popular meal for all students. They, they all like it. There's yams and other types of things in it. So, you know, we have a lot of families that might tell us, these are things that we eat a lot at our home or we wish we could have in our home. And so maybe a reach, I know you reach out to families already, but that might be a good question to ask them, what, what do you eat? What, especially when we're talking about meatless meals, you know, what do you eat that doesn't have meat in it? And, you know, kids, all kids like interesting foods. I, most kids like interesting foods.
Yeah. But we did add pozole to our menu a couple of years ago and got some really good feedback on that.
Zach?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a second and thank you for your consistent outreach to students, both in the student superintendent advisory council and other avenues. I also know that something that hasn't been brought up is, I don't know if it was schoolwide or if it was like by grade level, but there was a survey set up to every student, at least every senior at the level I, I want to say every student with just maybe 20 questions about meal service and whatnot and what students like about it, what they might not like about it, very similar to the questions that were asked in student superintendent advisory council. So I just want to say I really appreciate you and your department's consistent, both surveying and taking that feedback and iterating and consistent programming between the day. The one thing that I see a lot of is we have a lot of containers, which makes sense when the kids pick out the foods they want and whatnot, but like you'll have fruits in a container and carrots. So you might have a kid walk out with like four or five pieces, bins of plastic. Has there been any discussion about ways we can reduce that? Is that COVID related or is that just unfortunately with the way the laws are written?
Well, it was definitely an impact of COVID. We use so much more packaging than ever as a result of that. We're trying to get back to salad bars that students can choose different fruits and vegetables from and, and put as much as they need to on their plate. But, but that definitely is a, a challenge for us. I think, I think the other challenge at the high school level is considering how that group of students eat and where they go, because we have one lunch period and the locusts descend on the cafeteria and then they take everything with them and we might not see that tray or that fork or that knife again. So we do more of the disposables at the high school level. We do washables at middle school and elementary school. Yeah. And it definitely is better for the environment and it saves money. So it's, it's a great, and, and what we prefer. If, if you have some ideas on how we can move to washables in the high school, I would definitely welcome that.
Yeah, now that you say that, it makes a lot of sense about why you wouldn't open that. I didn't think you liked, kind of like where your, the campus is designed around the water, separate eating areas, you've got outside, you've got inside, you've got three or four or five different common spaces. I, I'd say you need a challenge.
So Sam, I'll jump in here as well and just say, you know, kudos to you and your team here. The last two years have been nothing but challenging for you and you all have stepped up and met the challenge. And not only did COVID throw stuff at you, we threw stuff at you and you guys all stepped up and did it and it was very, very impressive. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. It's our honor to serve the community.
Perfect. The other thing that, kind of going back to Mike and everyone saying here, one of the things that people don't realize, and this is my world I live in, is food safety. Food safety, the Food Safety Modernization Act, all these things that, that you all have to go through, none of you have any idea how burdensome these rules are. They're, they're unbelievable. And so when we look at some of these things, there, there's a lot of reasons they're, they're doing the things they're doing and it's because of the regulations being passed down. And especially accepting USDA dollars, the, the level of scrutiny from USDA, from the government is impressive. It's a wonderful thing, but there's a lot that goes into it. And so I just, I want to pass on that I feel your pain because it's, it's tough sledding.
Solidarity.
Solidarity. So anyway, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Back to my part of the meeting I tried to skip over. So next is the 2022, 2023 preliminary budget. Mr. Roberts will be presenting.
Hey, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Are the lights this low on? It just feels really dark in here. And I'm not sure if it's, if it's because we got the presenter on or?
I don't know.
It's been, I just don't. Is it because of the screen or?
Is it okay? I mean, is the light dimmed for some reason because of the line or can we turn it on with it? It's okay? Yeah, thank you.
Next up.
It hurts my eyes when it's so dark sometimes.
Yeah, I, I.
Your eyes are so perfect.
Okay. So yeah, Sam left, but I was going to say, you know, Sedexo, we recently approved the, they're, they won the RFP for the contract. It's a five-year contract. So we'll be working on the first year of that contract with Sam and this team for next year and then it's renewable for four years thereafter. Happy to have them back on board. It was a rigorous process for them to, to turn in that RFP and we'll work with them to get that, that eventually comes to the board for approval on July.
On that, on that note, on that note, and I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I know I'm delayed. But can we ask Sam for next year to list the participants? I think all the participants in the competition deserve recognition. So on a slide next year, Sam, could you please list the participant in the competition, the participants in the competition?
Future chefs.
Future chefs. We can do that. Mr. Schick, he slid out the back door, so, but we will make sure he sees that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
So first going to update on the 2122 since the legislative session just ended and Diane touched on some of this, but so right now we try to estimate a lot of the numbers. The, the state, they go through a process updating all their formulas and their, their models. So, you know, I'm just kind of doing my, my own estimates. So, you know, they're, they're not firm. We'll know more in the next two or three weeks. But for 2122 enrollment stabilization for the lost enrollment, it looks like about 3.3 million is what we're getting. That was a, some preliminary numbers we saw. Transportation funding, they did decide to use the 1920 student ridership for funding allocation. So that would be another million dollars for this year. And the levy equalization, they have said that with the legislation, go back to use 1920 enrollment and that would be a million dollars. So, so that's quite a bit of more one-time money in addition to the SRA money we have. So, you know, given some, some of these dollars and then down here at the bottom, just the enrollment, we, we still are under budget by about 1.7 million. So it's nice they gave us a little more money than we actually lost on enrollment. That, that works out well. Everybody do that math? So, so just updating the numbers here on this year down here at the bottom. So we had a $10.4 million deficit. You know, we lost some, some money on enrollment and then all these numbers down here are, are some of the one-time money that I just spoke about. And then if, you know, we use SRA money, we'll end up with, you know, more fund balance. We started 44.1 million and we should end up between 45 and 50 billion. So, you know, given that, you know, the SRA money and the one-time money, you know, there, there is opportunity there and, and, you know, we've had some discussions in cabinet just about, you know, we, we know we're using the SRA money to backfill some budget, but you know, we just got another $5 million from the state of one-time money. You know, how can we put that to use over the next couple of years? You know, not just backfilling the, the deficit, but you know, what are some supports we can do realizing that, you know, in a couple of years, those might have to go away probably. So, so it's a, it's a, you know, it's a dilemma, you know, you want to add and help things and support, but no one ever wants then in two years, you know, see anything go away. But we need to work through that because, you know, we, we have a little bit of opportunity here, you know, with some of this money and it's just trying to figure out what works.
So a really quick, big, quick question on the, the money received from the state is $5 million. So does that have the same type of, of limitations that SRA has? Because SRA, we have to use a certain amount of time, they're just have to go to certain things.
No, you can put it in the fund balance and you could use it over time. You don't have to use it right now or there's not near the restrictions.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Twenty. Yes?
Ron.
All right. So anyway, that's just a little update there on 2122. You see the numbers there at the bottom and, you know, could be better than that and, and we'll keep you posted on. So then 2223, so when we look at the budget for next year, you know, we start out with the $10.4 million deficit we have. So we're going to take the, the increased revenue and then the changes in the, in the expenditures and work from that number. So we start out with the revenue. You see here inflationary formula adjustment, that's 4.9 million. That, that's a five, five and a half percent inflation adjustment. And then there's benefits allocation, the healthcare benefits, that's going up from 11.6 thousand to 12,312. So that's going to cost some money in addition to the 25% employer benefits that, that are on this 4.9 million. So 25% on this plus of a, probably another million dollars on the health insurance. And then the material supply operating cost, so a pretty big inflation adjustment on that, much more than we had had on the spreadsheets before. So that looks like about 1.6 million. And then the social emotional learning staff, 1.78 million. And there's another slide later talking about that. And then special education funding, there's also inflationary adjustments on that. So it should be about 1.3 million. And like I said, the, the state runs through their models. This is, you know, the model here that we're kind of playing with, making some estimates. So, you know, it, it could be a million dollars more and it maybe could be a million dollars less, but let's, let's work with this 11.7. And then there's the enrollment that, you know, we lost, so we have to adjust for that. The levy equalization, it could be anywhere next year, $374,000 decrease to a $782,000 increase. I just don't have the information from the state on the inflationary factors that they're going to use for that formula. Those factors are maybe different than the other factors that are used up here. So that's a conservative amount there. Transportation funding for 2122, we're estimating the same as what we budgeted for this year. Even though, you know, they adjusted us on 1920 at about 8.8 million, we did have a We did have a loss of ridership this year, which would probably be about one to 1.5 million that we would not get back. And then the property tax increase, this is if the levy passes, another $2 million there and some other revenue changes. So that's 11.9 million dollars, you know, to the good for next year's budget. And we'll have more information at the next meeting in April. So then we look at the changes, staff cost changes. So there are some, some areas there where, you know, the class sizes are getting pretty low. You know, this is pretty low hanging fruit here, seven teachers. And when I say low hanging fruit, I mean, it's almost on the ground. We have some, you know, we could probably make a case to take about 20 teachers out of elementary. The enrollment and class sizes were that low. But we're looking at, you know, around seven. Middle school, there's also some low classes there, maybe six. You know, we're still reviewing that, but, you know, we'll be taking a hard look at that. And that still is very, leaves the middle schools with plenty of staff and then pretty good class size.
Hey Vic.
Yes?
So when I visit the schools, a lot of times they're talking about having, you know, educated staff that have specific ability to handle like emotional issues or, or stress or that kind of thing, right? And they have degrees, you know, where, you know, and they always say like, we can handle these ones, but when they have a kid who's got some serious problems, we don't have anybody here who can do that. So, you know, what about looking at, you know, like if we do, if we do remove staff? Or even 20, if you said we can go up to 20 or something and, and, and change that out for people who have these specific degrees to handle these, these kids, you know, who have just been devastated emotionally.
So, you know, so we don't have the ongoing money to do that, but, you know, you have to use one-time money and then figure out when that one-time money left, what are we gonna do? And, you know, we try to handle some, you know, that's not all special ed, but we're looking at some special ed things and we've tried to put in some, some behavior type things there. But yeah, I hear you. I mean, we're, we're always trying to figure out, you know, what can we do better there? But any type of ideas and?
I mean, the budget goes to salaries, right? And that's where the budget goes really, right? So, I mean, you don't want anybody to lose their job at the same time you have to be fiscal responsible, responsible for the community, right?
Yeah, and that's a dilemma, you know, we do have some one-time money. So how long do we want to limp along and, and that's what we'll be talking about the next couple of board meetings? So high school teaching staff, that's. Oh, yeah.
Just to interject there, just to make sure it's kind of clear to everybody. So with the, with the sort of basic education staffing, it's really, it's formula driven from the state. So then it's formula driven from the district and there's a particular class size. So if we're all basic ed teachers, we have X class size. And when class sizes drop to the extent where, you know, three of us have really small classes, then that's, we're really not generating the revenue from the state to support having that many teachers. And so that's, that's really what Vic is talking about there. On the one-time money part, the dilemma, and I'm just kind of repeating or emphasizing what, what he's sharing. If, if we can use that money for staffing, so that could be money, on the one hand, you're saying, well, we're sort of overstaffed here, so we're gonna right-size the, the generalized staffing. But now we have this one-time money, how can we use this one-time money? If we hire people, it has to be with the understanding that in two years from now, they're gonna not be, we're not gonna be able to sustain that because it's not part of the ongoing revenue. So we're cognizant of the, of the fact that, you know, there's the need for additional supports for students and not only on the academic learning recovery, but on some of the behavior and, and those kinds of things. And so the, just the dilemma is how do we, you know, short-term find people who want a short-term position? And then when it's, if it's a very effective support and, and everybody loves it, two years from now, what's gonna happen when we say you gotta take it away? And so that, it's not that it can't be done, we just have to think really creatively and differently about how to, how to help meet the need with the knowledge that it, there's not the ongoing revenue to support it. So.
Yeah, and then this year, you know, we've kept, we didn't cut any staff. And if you're out in the schools and walk through an elementary, you can find class sizes that are really good, right? And that's good for learning, good for kids and good for even what you're saying because, you know, if you have those issues and, you know, you have 12 kids versus 25 and things, it's, it's definitely, definitely been a, been a help. But it's just continues to be tough times out there for, for teachers and everybody. So, high school teaching staff, that's under review, that's not, there's not near as much there to really whittle down. There could be a school here or there that maybe is a little over, but others are, you know, staff pretty well. And, you know, our high school, the enrollment there really has bounced back and not, not dropped as much as the elementary and the middle schools. Special ed, MCP online endeavor, so we did, you know, we have about 16 staff there we added. So that's under review based on enrollment and how those look for next year. Special education, so that's always under review. You know, that's an area that we just really have to continue to make sure, sure we have the supports there. And, you know, there's a lot of issues there, as Mike had talked about too. We're looking at some things from middle school and there's always a, just a laundry list of requests there. And we try to, try to knock off the priorities from the top to the bottom and see what we can do. So, so that's in process and just other staffing. So some of these, we're just still looking at, you know, changes from last year's bargain versus what we put in the budget and just kind of working through that to see, okay, did we, the bargaining costs a little more? So was there not enough in the budget? So it's looking like it's close, but we're still working on that. So projected increase in staff costs, this is mainly just the inflationary adjustments and those employer benefits that, you know, the state's giving us, say, let's go back here. You know, these totals right here, $7 million for those two. It's gonna cost us at least 12, probably more than 13 million when that gets passed through to the staff that we, that we pay for. So that's just a rough number there and we'll be working on that. Teacher retirements, so should, you know, the teachers at the end of the scale retiring, that should save some money there as we replace some teachers that begin the scale. We have a bunch of what we call certificated classified pools. That's where you get all your coaching salaries, your overload pay, you know, not really targeted, not, not associated with a one FTE or a certain number of, you know, 10 teachers times a month. It's just, you know, your coaches, that's, you know, two and a half, $3 million that's put there to, to pay them. Overload's another 1.2 million and so on down the list. So when there's an inflationary adjustment, some of those costs actually go up too.
Vic, can I ask you a question on other staffing? What would that include?
It could include administration, you know, things like that pretty much. I don't think you have, you know, it could be secretaries and things that pairs up here. Your, your maintenance, classified, M and O, custodians. So that's, we'll be working on this chart and you'll see it again in April as we work through that. Here's some information on the social emotional learning. So from what I gather, it's a three-year phase in of the funding. You would get a third next year and then a third each year after that. So in order to get the funding, you have to, yes?
Ron, do you have a question?
I do and I apologize. Vic, just for my classification, I know this is a catch, but the peripheries indicate a negative amount. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Definitely. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sam.
So with the social emotional learning, the formula and the staff. So in order to get the funding, you have to have more staff than what the state says is in the formula. So right now, we currently have 68.35 social emotional learning staff. And the state says we need 61. So we would get that money and, you know, we can use it to fill the gap between what the state gives us and what we pay. So the additional funding is 1.78 million. And you see down here, what it costs us for the 68.3 staff is 6.95 million. What we're currently getting is 3.65 million. That goes back to what Dr. Pierce is saying about the levy and how they fund certain areas as well. So they'll give us 1.78 million, which will not even fund the staff that we currently have. So, you know, it's difficult to say, well, let's add a bunch of nurses when you would just be digging your, getting in the hole further. So, you know, it's, you know, even in, in year two, if they give us more money, it's still gonna cost us more than what they're gonna give us. But, you know, we'll try to work through that and, you know, we definitely need more counselors and nurses and things. And, you know, how do we do that for next year? It's probably not gonna be, happen as we, we're in a situation where we need that money to fill some gaps. But, you know, we realize the need out there and, you know, how can we work through that? There are a bunch of compliance issues that the OSPI is working on. One of them that we're interested about is contracted services. You know, we have a current, using ESSR money for the mental health services. And, you know, in the future, we'd like to continue that as ESSR money goes away. Well, would that be part of, you know, me and this compliance if you can, you know, use those costs and some things like that? And we would also like to, looking at that mental health and keeping it going. You know, there's other money that we could use, federal lab and different things. So we're always keeping that in the back of our mind as we budget for the next couple of years.
Well, mental health is always an issue, right? But it's, it's a quadruple issue right now.
Exactly.
Right? So you would think that over time, it can, it might go away a little bit, right?
But if they.
Or approve.
Yeah, but I mean, if they give us more money, the next year you get another third, you should be able to, you know, some of that hopefully, you know, work some of that in.
I would just, from even pre-pandemic, there was a lot of conversations about students needing a lot more mental health supports pre-pandemic. And I would say that was something that I've observed as having a very positive impact for a lot of reasons that aren't pandemic-related. They're made somewhat worse by pandemic, but regardless of whether COVID happened or not, there were kids who received a lot of mental health services, both from our counselors, which I didn't know this, but our counselors have pretty much the same certification as our mental health therapists. It's just, mental health therapists go and get the actual certification, counselors have the same degree. So our counselors are able to do a lot of, a lot more than even I had realized prior to this. And I just want to make clear that even pre-pandemic students, I, what I would say, I just want to put this right. What I observed pre-pandemic is we would still, students would overwhelmingly benefit from having a continued mental health therapist in the schools. And I don't think the effects of COVID are going to go away in five, 10, 15. I think we have a lot of lasting.
They might, they might, but I mean, I'm telling you, when I go to the schools, what they tell me is it's 100 times worse right now. And, and what I, and I have a degree to handle X, but this is something more. And this is, and there's a lot of this more that we just don't have the skills, we don't have the training, we don't have anything to handle that. We just don't have that, that capacity.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, the elementary schools, I mean, it's.
Elementary, middle schools specifically, yeah.
It's disruptive and it's, it's tough. Yeah. So how do we work through that for sure?
Yes, Dan.
So Vic, on the OSPI, working on the details where you're, or just above that, sorry. Were you talking about the people we contract with? If I read it correctly, and I looked again today, it said that those people that you hire have to have the educational staff associate, the ESA license. So not all contract people, because we only have those if we're working in the schools. So speech therapists, nurses, ODPT, psychs, social workers. Not all people we contract with have that unless they've perhaps in the past worked in that. So that would be maybe the catch that maybe you.
It could be, yeah.
Want to find out more.
When I was on a webinar, they acted like contracted services like we have with, could qualify. But they just didn't have enough details on that part.
So that licensure, and, and that can be not too difficult for them to get.
You're probably right on some of that, yeah, for sure.
There's also community members, right? There's, there's a lot of people in the community and the tri-cities that, that have those degrees, right? And, and I've actually reached out to a couple of them and what they tell me is, and that was my first thought is like, hey, what if like each one of you volunteered one day a month or something like that, or one day every couple of months? And, but what they say is same thing, like we're, we're so busy right now, it's ridiculous. We don't, we, in the past, maybe three years ago, sure, we could have done that, but now we don't have that capacity. But I still wonder if there's something we can do in that regard. Might be a couple of it.
And we did do that mental health middle school and I'm not sure if they hired a couple of those or not yet.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking about without hiring them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Volunteer type.
We're in the process of the two additions.
For three? Well, the supervisor person and then the two people.
The supervisor could do some therapy too.
Yes.
But no, Mike, you're absolutely right. I mean, and, and, you know, I'm kind of with Zachary. I don't think it's gonna go away anytime soon.
Let it come back.
Ron, do you have a question?
No, sorry.
Okay, so just another little blurb down here. So state-funded wage and benefit cost versus district cost. So here's a little quick levy scenario. This is basically what we're talking about. So they're funded by the state with, you know, your benefits and salaries, basic ed costs, no special ed included. 121 million. Our cost, 158 billion, so almost 160 to 120, right around there. Local funded, 36, 37 million. That is the levy. That's part of that nurse thing where two nurses versus so many. You can, you know, you can say it's nurses, say it's counselors or whatever. It's 36 million and it's whatever you'd have to cut. So that's that. And then you add that difference there plus special ed and some others, it's 42 million. So the levy gets us about 32 million and the 10 million, that's the deficit that's coming out of fund balance. So that is really, it's pretty much right there. You can, you can have 10 pages or just one little chart.
I like the one little chart.
You know, so when you say, you know, security officers, that's part of this, you know.
And you talked about there, there's 27 or something, is that the number you used, 20 something? Teachers that we potentially could cut?
If you really looked at it, the numbers, yeah.
Yeah, and that would, I'm not saying we'd do that, but I'm just saying, would that, that would affect that?
A couple million dollars, yeah. Yeah, through that. So it's moving on to the material supply operating cost. So that's the other cost that we look at and go up or down that impact the budget. So the top part here is really the local funded. And it's not all filled out yet because we're still working through things, but most of these blanks are gonna stay unchanged because we really don't, don't have the money to really increase any of those. The ones that do have some changes are some that we really can't control a lot. Utility costs, probably gonna increase 100, $120,000. With your natural gas, electricity, those type of costs. Liability insurance, increase probably $350,000. They tell us the budget about a 15% increase. And that goes up every year, just, you know, people, school districts get sued and our insurance carriers have to change their rates. Fuel, this is a tough one here. We usually have not approached this 885,000 for probably eight or nine years, but we could approach it this year with the higher prices in fuel. And if it continued, we'd have to at least have that or 900,000. But that could change over the next month. We'll put some more attention to that.
Vic, quick question on fuel. Do we have a contract fuel?
It's been it out. Yeah, it's been out every year.
Perfect, thank you.
And then down here, special education, these are contracts for services primarily. And that is quite a large increase there, but some of that will get offset with some revenue that's not in this presentation yet. For some higher-cost kids and you can do what's called safety net and gets reimbursed. So we do have over 100,000 in there that's a new cost that we should get reimbursed for. It's an added cost for services for, for certain individuals.
Zachary, it would be things outside of school, so they might need additional services that we don't have. And there was more money put in safety net this year also.
So in this year, that's another thing for this year is I think we put in for about 350,000 of safety net. Last year we got 150,000, so that would be some more money coming in this year. And then the security resource officer contract, that's through the city. And that goes up every year and it's probably gonna be about 430,000 for the high school, middle school type of resources. So anyway, we'll continue to work on this. And then the bottom part really is the federal funding and, and we don't have a lot of, that's not gonna impact the deficit or with those numbers, but I did include communities and schools. So we currently have nine schools doing that program and Cascade and Southgate want to add that. So that would increase that cost and then bring it up to 11 schools. That's funded out of a learning assistance program, money lab, high poverty money. So the schools that do have that program, like, you know, Highlands and those, they get more money and they put that towards that program. And I don't know, have we had a presentation on that or is there one coming up?
We had one last year, this year's hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so there'll be a presentation on that program. So that's about 692,500 there that, you know, it gets. So that's about 692,500 there that, you know, it gets added to that deficit. So anyway, that's your, your, what's called MSOC and, uh, continue to work on those. And then putting that all together, so here's the 10.4 million dollar deficit. Here's all the changes in revenue we just talked about, 11.9 million. And down the list, you know, here's the, you know, some of these changes in the funding for special ed. And, uh, down here's the 7 million that we had for inflation area and employer benefits. 11.9 million there. And then down here, some of the, the added costs, uh, actually the retirement saves some money, but then you're looking at 12, 13 million dollars or so, probably in, uh, adjustments to staff salaries and benefits. If you take some of those reductions, there are 1.3 million. Here's what we just talked about. This adds up to 692,000 from the slide below. Slide before 692,500, that's these. So, um, we're still at on paper here about 9.9, 10 million dollar deficit, which is a lot better than what we had, uh, a couple of months ago. I think it was like 15 million. So, um, you know, we're going to keep working through that. And then here's some one-time levy money that we could get for 22, 23. That's what, uh, the legislature that recently passed said they could maybe use 19, 20 again. And, uh, so that'd be some one-time money there. And then we have ESTR money. So we would, uh, break even. And that's where I say, you know, with the one-time money, there's opportunity over the next couple of years. You know, tonight, we're going to backfill, but you know, what can, what else can we do? You know, that, uh, people need to be aware of that, yeah, we can do this, but it may not last forever. And then that's what, uh, you know, Dr. Pierce, accountant, we've been trying to think that through. And, uh, we'll probably be coming back here, you know, the next, uh, two or three board meetings with some, some thoughts on that. And that really wouldn't impact this budget. That would be over on the ESTR side, you know, if you budget $5 billion here in ESTR, $5 million, uh, revenue, that's, that's outside of this, this formula right here. So then looking, looking beyond here, here's $1.85. These are the levy rates. And then if you go out here, you know, $2, $2.10, you know, it's not a huge increase and it's still quite a deficit. And that's what the concern is, uh, that we, that we get out here and then we really do have to make some drastic cuts. But that is two or three years away. You could have more enrollment come in than what's up here. Uh, the state could provide more money. So those are some of the unknowns. And that was the dilemma with a four-year levy. Uh, you know, back in the fall, uh, we talked about to the board, yeah, we, we don't need a lot here in these first couple of years because we have this one-time money. But it's out in these other out years where, you know, we're very concerned. And that's when we went back here this last time, we're going to go do a two-year levy. And, uh, you know, we can see what happens out here. If we were at $2.50 right here, you would have a surplus of about five or six million dollars. And if you were 250 here, you'd still have that surplus. If you were 250 out in these years, you'd eventually get back to break even or a little bit of a deficit. So even if there's 250, we still have work to do because even, you know, you'd still be in deficit out here, two or three million. But, uh, we'll just, uh, continue to work through that. And, uh, here's a little slide here. If the levy fails, $21 million will be lost in 23, 24. And, uh, 13.5 in 24, 25. Actually, that's wrong. It's 22, 23, 22, 23, 21 million, 13.5 in 23, 24. So it's a, it's a lot of, uh, money that would be added on to this deficit, these two years here. And then you'd run that levy again in 23 and start getting money again here a little bit in 24 and 24, 25. So any questions on that? I know it's a lot and, uh, we're going to continue to, to hit the numbers in the next three meetings. And it's still, like I said, preliminary, we're going to keep adding to those charts and filling you in and getting thoughts on, you know, getting thoughts on, okay, you know, how much deficit are we comfortable with? And using the one-time money and doing some things. That's what's going to be discussed, uh, next couple of meetings.
Vic, you got a question?
Yeah. So first of all, I want to say thank you for, uh, everything you do. I feel like, uh, budgets are not always the most thanked, uh, thing to put together. So I, I just wanted to take a second and say I really appreciate it. It's hard, hard stuff to do, so I appreciate it. Um, and I think you do a really good job of it. Do you have a read, was it really just that drop of enrollment? Or what caused such a aggressive, uh, or I guess, I don't know, aggressive, sorry, but such a difficult outlook in terms of.
Yeah, so enrollment, uh, has hurt, you know, it's probably four, you know, three to five million right there. So it's not only the current drop, uh, we're losing what we thought we would gain. Okay, so right now we're, say, 18,300 kids. Well, we would have projected before COVID that we were maybe at 19,000 then. So, uh, you know, we're not growing and we dropped. So that's a lot there. And, uh, you know, we, we were at $1.50 on the levy. And, you know, so we're trying to compete with districts around the state and around our area for salaries and things like that. So, uh, if another district's at 250, yeah, it's a little, a lot easier for them to, to give, uh, certain salaries and not show a deficit. But when we're at $1.50 and we get $10 million less and we're trying to pay the same rates, you know, that, that has an impact too. And that's not just for, for teachers, that's for all staff. Where we're trying to compete and make sure we, we have that.
Thank you.
So yeah, there's a combination of things. And then, uh, like I said, the OSPI is going to be updating their allocation models and we'll get stuff, firm it up when we get those. Uh, we're continuing to work on staffing and, and those, uh, discussions will be ongoing here, uh, with secondary and elementary. And then just some more presentations.
Any other questions? Great.
Thank you, Vic.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda, asset preservation. Ryan Jones will be presenting.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce, members of the board. Ryan Jones, capital project manager, here to, uh, give you a presentation on asset preservation program. An update, rather. Uh, some of you have seen this before, some of you, this might be the first time. This is an annual presentation that we do, um, that's required under an RCW that was passed back in 1994 regarding, uh, schools that had been built with a state assistant fund and funding. So here's a real brief kind of a summary. As you can see, uh, the asset preservation program applies to any schools that were used, built using state, uh, construction funds post 1993. So really any school that's been built since then that was used SCAP funds, we have to track its condition and report it on what's called ICOS. It's, um, it's a database the state runs. And it started out, oh, probably about four years ago, real basic, and they've just been kind of growing on it. They've now got grants that go through it and, and our deform processes through there. So they've been gradually making the system more and more complex. It's kind of more of a one-stop shop for facilities, if for anything state involved, so. And of course, we have to report the condition of these asset preservation schools by April 1st of each year. So hence we're here, March 23rd. So, um, it also requires that this, and a certified evaluation is done every six years. So annually, we do an assessment internally of the condition of the schools. And every sixth year, we hire a consultant. Typically, uh, you know, a lot of architects have that certification. They'll come in and they'll go school to school and, and assess the condition. And then they provide a certified report. So as you can see there at the bottom, our last certified report was in March of 2020. So the assessment scores, there's, uh, basically five categories. You can see with the ranges and, uh, so every structure or building more or less falls into one of these categories based on the accumulation of the, of the scores of different systems that are graded. So as you see excellent, so the representation of excellent would be a brand new school, just brand new construction, not necessarily even a remodel, like brand new. Uh, good might be, uh, like, uh, a very comprehensive remodel because there are still maybe some infrastructure there that isn't brand new. Fair would be a school that is probably, well, is getting ready to be, uh, you know, have some major, uh, major construction project, like a renovation. And of course, poor is, uh, it's basically ready to be replaced. So, and we've never had anything really get past fair, just for the record. So the, the, the community's been very supportive in, uh, maintaining our facilities. So once again, as I said, the asset preservation program applies to buildings post 1993. So these are the states, or I'm sorry, these are the schools that the state considers asset preservation schools. So these are the ones we are required to report the building condition on. Now, we've expanded that to, to go across all our facilities because it is a good grading system and it kind of helps us, uh, make sure that we're addressing every facility within the district. This is just kind of a, just, I, I've talked about ICOS before. I don't think everybody's ever really seen what it looks like. This is just a couple of screenshots. As you can see, it has multiple facilities listed. And, um, it has, uh, basically some demo or some, uh, details on each facility, square footage, year built, year accepted, things of that nature. So I just thought I'd include this this year because, uh, we've never had, no one had ever had an opportunity to see what it looks like. But it's a web-based site and facilities inventory tracking system where information and building condition details about each school, district are stored. So, and this is the, uh, the database that they utilize for asset preservation program reporting. So just kind of an example of how this kind of works. So as you can see in 2020 there, we, we highlighted HVAC at Southridge High School. So as you see, the heating, cooling and the HVAC distribution system scored at 62%. Now, it's important to note that, as I mentioned, basically you can have a school go from 90% to 62. There's a lot of, a lot of room in there, right? So sometimes you'll have a score that'll stay at 90 forever, then all of a sudden it'll drop a lot in one year. That's just because multiple systems aged to that point where they have enough issues that you have to identify as, uh, as fair. And then also you'll see like a large drop year to year sometimes. So that's just kind of explaining how that, how that kind of happens. But so in 2022, uh, we scored it, as you can see here. So the heating system, we rated good, 90%. Now, main reason for that is even though we added new air handler systems to the rooftops, um, uh, at the school, the boiler is still the original boiler. So therefore it's not brand new excellent. Whereas the cooling system, they got a brand new chiller. So it's brand new equipment. So it's, it's graded in excellent. And then of course, the facility HVAC distribution system is a good because there were some modifications done to it, but still inside the, the walls, there's still original ducting and, uh, you know, uh, louvers and things of that nature. So not everything is brand new, but we've made certain improvements. So that, this kind of is an example of how this, this is kind of a, a living, uh, a living database of how things change from year to year. And kind of one of the ways we work to target some of our capital projects and just our maintenance work. Are there any questions at this point? Yes?
It should be pretty quick. So like for the schools that we're required to report on, Desert Hills is there, but then Chinook is not. So is it just not every school that's built new or what's the?
That, I can tell you, that's what the, the, the state is tracking as asset preservation. So I do not know why.
So they just, they're the ones who pick it?
Correct. They, they are the ones that tell us what schools they consider asset preservation schools.
Ron, you have a question, sir?
I did, and you may address this later, but I'm not seeing, uh, Highlands on this list. And, and we had a presentation or a comment from the public about Highlands. All right, where are they on this list? I didn't see them at all.
It's down a couple of pages there, Ron. It's on the next, uh, I've got it on page 63.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to the actual, uh, reporting for this year here towards the end here.
Okay.
Right here. So, uh, as you see, so this is the scores, uh, this year. So we, we typically, we try to put the, uh, the ones more of our lower scores, I guess, towards the top. Because that's where we focus most of our efforts at this point, you know? And really, it's kind of steep sometimes because it's tough when you have, when you have, when you're trying to justify work sometimes it's tough because if you're doing your job, you're maintaining schools and you're targeting work, really your school's never dropped that low, which, I mean, and once again, the community's been very supportive. And as you can see, our scores look very good. And mind you, this is what having a certified one done two years ago. So this is right about what the certified assessment was. So, you know, we've been, we've been trying to be very, uh, very good stewards of the facility and, uh, trying to keep them on upkeep. So, but looking up to the top there, you can see where our target's going to be over the next, you know, decade or so. And of course, uh, as you saw in that database, that score is accumulation of multiple systems. And you'll break down HVAC system, the HVAC will break down further into heating and cooling. And, and, uh, you'll have roofing, you'll have exterior windows, interior windows, interior doors, exterior doors. So there's a lot that goes into the score, into this, and it's a formula that the state has, has basically put together to come to those, those percentages. So are there any questions on the, the percentages?
So when we're looking at the match eligible dollars, that's when the, the state will then give us, will match our bond dollars.
Correct. That is, that is the 30-year, 30-year mark essentially since the, they, uh, we last had SCAP funding for that project. And, and once again, sometimes it's tempting to think, you know, once you hit that match eligible year, that maybe there's something to be done. But if you've been, once again, if you've been doing a good job maintaining your school, that may not always be the case. There's certain schools that, that may have higher priority just because of some, some other variables. So, or, or previous work done.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to tie in on Mike's question, that, that max eligible year. Does that mean that we can't plan before then? So that when the match eligible year is reached, we can act upon it?
Was, was the.
That you can't plan before?
No, we absolutely can. For instance, Ridgeview is coming up into its match eligible, but we've obviously, we're obviously in the planning process for that. So, so we, we do look ahead in that, in that sense. We have a good idea when these bonds become available.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, questions?
That top group, right? That top group, right?
Correct.
I'm just going to, um, summarize what, what, uh, what Vic said for the benefit of the folks at home. So, uh, this is, uh, these scores and this information and when it's eligible for state assistance funding, the, um, it, the facilities executive committee helps us look at this and make determinations about, um, future bonds and what will be the next projects coming up on those bonds. So the question Mr. Mayberry asked about Ridgeview, uh, Ridgeview was included on the last bond. So they were looking ahead to when does Ridgeview become eligible? What are the needs of the schools, all of those kinds of things? And they help us determine and kind of make those priorities. And then obviously we bring that plan forward, um, to the board for consideration and input and so forth. And then ultimately that potentially ends up on, um, the, the capital projects that go on the bond measure. Which is what Vic just said. I just wanted to say it for anybody who couldn't hear, uh, the microphone.
How, Tracy, how, how did Park get so far out to 2029?
Back to 2029?
Like the remodel, remodel.
In 1999. Yeah, so I'm going to ask, um, either Ryan or Vic to, to speak to that because they have the history on it a little bit better than I do.
Yeah, it went on a way to a major remodel or remodel of some type. What's SCAP assist, or, uh, state assisted funding in 1999 would be why that would be not 2029.
I'm sorry, you sort of faded out online.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, so, so that would indicate that they, they had a major project or, or major remodel or something that was state, state assisted in 1999, which would have reset that 30-year clock to meaning 2029, they'd be eligible.
Okay, so is there any change to the 30-year clock? If you wanted to make an amendment or appeal, but is there, let's say if, uh, we knew some major renovations were needed at Park, is there any way to, uh, request, uh, a change before the 30-year mark?
I'd have to coordinate with our, our regional OSPI coordinator. It's probably to even get a feel for that.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't believe so. But again, it's not to say that something couldn't be done for the school. It's just, it's not eligible for any kind of, uh, funding assistance from the state, which we obviously do rely on to help keep the, the bond amounts lower and the rates lower and those kinds of things. And then we would just know if, if there was a decision made, and I'm checking my assumption with you, Ryan, if there was a decision made that, uh, we were going to do something to a school that wasn't eligible for SCAP and we did it, would that then set the clock again and push them out even farther?
No, because the, the clock is strictly tied to the SCAP funding.
Okay, but the thing that we did in 1999 at Park, set, reset the clock.
Correct. It would, it, it had some, some form of state assistance.
Okay, because they took, because we used state assistance to do that renovation.
Correct.
Whatever. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, another one that comes, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Another one that comes up to me is like, uh, Kamaiken being farther out than Southridge. That's just another, like, which. is like Comaiken being farther out than Southridge. That's just another, like, which one you'd actually do first. But, down the road.
So my question is on Kiwaiden, on KDC. So there's no match-eligible. Is that due to the preschool or how does that work?
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to look into that a little more detailed. It may even internally funded from the very get-go.
Yeah. Yeah. Because it's not K-12, it's preschool.
So it comes through like federal funding or something?
We can follow up on that and, you know.
I was just curious because I know we've added on and parts are not very good anymore.
Any other questions? Wonderful.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next on our agenda is Bus Purchase Plan. April Heiser is going to be presenting.
I'm not going to read this slide, and this just is an overview of our staff. So this is just an overview of our staff that we have in our department. The only thing I'll add to it is our four dispatchers, our student management specialist and myself all carry CDLs. So we are out driving. We are dealing with a shortage, just like a lot of other places. There's a lot of days that the only one that's in the office manning the radios and the phone is our assistant manager. Kathy does a great job. But we're out, we're so short, we are all out driving. So we do what we have to do to get the kids where they need to go. So I'm going to quickly go over like our state funding. We're required to report to the state three times a year. We have a fall report that's due the end of October. And some of those in the fall are both non-funded reports and funded reports. And then we have the winter report, which is due the end of January, and our spring report is due the beginning of May. So our winter and spring reports consist of student counts only. Our fall report is where we do the majority of all of our reporting. And we're required to report all of the previous year's fuel expenditures, all of the total miles that go on all of the buses. And we have to break those down for to-from miles, extracurricular and field trip miles. We also report the total expenditures for transporting McKinney-Vento students to and from school. We report the current year's student counts for that reporting period. And in the fall, we also have to enter in every single bus stop for every route that we have into the state's EDS system. We have 109 routes, which all consist of either a high school and elementary run or a middle school and elementary run. And then that includes our special services that way. And then we have high school and Delta runs, Ecap and KDC runs. So in the EDS system, it takes the bus stop and it calculates the distance to the school that the student attends, and it uses latitude and longitude readings to portion out that funding. Our drivers count students every morning and every afternoon, and they turn in their counts daily. We take all of that information and put it into a spreadsheet. The state requires that we report three consecutive days in that reporting period, and they pay us for the median day. So they throw out the high, throw out the low, and we get paid for the, for the median. We do not receive any funding for students who live within the one-mile walk zone. No funding for any shuttles, so JROTC, math, TRITAC, or any midday transportation. Our fleet consists currently, right now, of 142 buses. We'll be receiving seven in August and will be requesting to surplus 10. So the amount of years a bus stays on the depreciation is based on the type of bus that it is. There's two different categories. A type A bus or B bus take eight years for the state to reimburse. Or they're a C or D bus, and that takes 13. Our fleet consists of all C and D-type buses, which are the larger ones. The A and B are the real small ones. You might see a daycare facility using that are 16 passengers or less. The state reimburses the cost of a bus for just the minimum specifications required by the state. They do not reimburse any options that you put on a bus when you order them. Some examples of options that I add to buses when I request to purchase them is a right-side handrail. A bus only comes with the left side. So that way, kids can hang on on both sides when they maneuver the top stairs. We always add a strobe light for better visibility in inclement weather, insta-chains, camera systems, two-way radios. All of that is non-funded through the state. We currently have 109 buses still on our depreciation schedule with four coming off this year. So as of today, 23% of our buses are off the depreciation schedule, meaning that we've already been reimbursed for those. So there's no revenue going back into the TVF for those buses. Mileage and repair costs are the determining factor when we request a surplus of bus. We have several buses that have over 200,000 miles on them, and they have a higher cost to keep them running. Bus mileage is not comparable to your car mileage due to the continual stopping and starting that we do on a daily basis on all of our runs. This year, we're looking to surplus buses as old as 1998 and as new as 2009. So while 2009 seems relatively new, they used to be trip buses. They have a lot of miles on them and they need total engine rebuilds. So since they're off the depreciation schedule this year, we feel it's better to not spend the money on rebuilding the engine and just replacing the bus. So air conditioning has been a topic of discussion, especially since we suspended busing for a week last year too, due to extreme heat. So I went ahead and got a quote for the buses that are in North Carolina just coming through the factory not right now that are going to be delivered in August. And to retrofit those buses with an air conditioning unit, it has a price tag of $10,180. Some of the benefits to having air conditioning would be to cool the buses to a more reasonable temperature for staff and students. Air conditioning would be useful during the summer school months when it's so hot outside. During the school year, we, we could use the air conditioning May, June, August, if we had school, or September. Some other factors to consider would be the cost to maintain them. The air conditioning systems only bring down the temperature about 20 degrees, which is obviously much more comfortable than outside. But it's not like trying to cool your own personal vehicle. There's a lot more air to move around and buses are not airtight. And we keep opening and closing the doors all day. So this year, we did bid buses with and without air conditioning for comparisons. You can see on the slide the difference between the two. So the additional cost purchasing them when you do not have to retrofit them is $7,584. So air conditioning is one of those items that is not reimbursed by the state. So my TVF would need to be supplemented to offset the cost of the air conditioning unit so that we could continue to replace buses. Future planning, electric buses is the future of transportation. It's expected by 2027 that we will start to see limited diesel engines available for purchases on school buses. We know on the Thomas buses, Daimler will no longer be offered as an engine. So we'll be limited to Cummins engines. By 2030, it's predicted that over 90% of all school buses will be electric. The Department of Ecology is expected to have grants out starting next month to help districts transition to electric buses. And there will be over $500 million nationwide for the next five years to help purchase zero emission buses. And they pay a portion of the infrastructure needed to charge them. So we would need to upgrade our facility and add in power grids. There's also money available for low emission buses, which is the propane and national, natural gas buses. We've not seen the actual grant language yet and do not know what the qualifying factors are for how they're going to award that money. So once the grant applications become available, I'll be working with Mr. Roberts as those become available in Washington State. We want to make sure that we are preparing for the up-and-coming changes in the transportation Since I am requesting buses, this is a slide that shows the previous 10 years and how many buses we've purchased each year. And for those of you who are new on the board, in 2018, the district changed the middle school walk zone area from two miles down to one. So we needed additional buses to be able to transport those students. So we are requesting the purchase of seven buses again this year without air conditioning. These would be delivered in August of 2023. By ordering now and scheduling delivery out to next summer, we would be saving money by purchasing them off of this year's state bid. School bus vendors have to update their biz annually every August. The cost would be charged to next year's budget. The remaining money in the TVF after paying for the seven buses that we have on order right now and receiving my next depreciation payment from the state would cover the cost of these buses.
Do you have any questions?
So the, hold on here, Ron. Hold on. I'll get you in one second. So, so we're talking a difference of about $50,000 for the air-conditioned buses and the non-air-conditioned buses for those seven. Is that roughly correct? Okay. How many, how many buses are we running like for the summer school program? Are we, like, what's the workload? Like, is it 50 buses, 20 buses?
Last year, we ran 41 buses.
41. And if we wanted to retrofit buses, it's that $10,000 cost for air conditioning?
So, no. Only because the price for the $10,000, which expires at the end of this month, because our quota's expiring and prices have gone up, that's only for those seven buses that are sitting, just coming out of the factory. There's five that are completed at the factory of the seven. I did get a quote that came in yesterday to retrofit air conditioning on our existing buses that are on my fleet right now. And they range anywhere from 19,000 to 21,000 per bus to retrofit.
Okay.
What about special ed, education buses? Do we have buses that are specifically for that?
Yes.
How many? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head.
We've had to guess.
If I guessed, 35.
That's a lot.
We're running around 29 routes that are for life skills.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we maybe look at doing something like those buses, potentially air conditioning or something like that, right? Where some of those kids who, who might, yeah, might need that. That might be something we can look at as well.
Yeah. If, I think if you were interested in doing that, my recommendation would be to put the air conditioning on the special service routes on those buses and then use those buses for summer school.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
April, you asked, or you said midday runs, you get no reimbursement for that. What would midday runs be? Would that be students on shortened schedules or what other kinds of things?
Yes.
Just those?
Correct.
Okay.
It would, other districts may have half-day kinder programs. Those kinders in the middle of the day would not be paid for. Our districts are half-full day. So that doesn't really pertain to us, but we do have the kids on the shortened schedules.
And April, would Ecap also be in that category?
Yes. So Ecap and KDC would get funding, taking them to school in the morning and then taking them home in the evening, but not the middle-of-the-day portion.
Okay. Ron, do you have a question?
I did. The proposed motion, is that for electric buses or just your non-electric, not, I'm sorry, non-electric air-conditioned buses versus your non-air-conditioned buses?
The proposal is for non-air-conditioned buses. The buses that we are requesting to purchase are all route buses.
Okay. Did you catch all that, Ron?
As I did. I did. Thank you.
Yes, Zach.
So the increase in money to pay for air conditioning, where's that money coming from?
The, probably the, the general budget would have to supplement my TVF.
Okay. And then how much would you anticipate in additional ongoing maintenance and training and parts, supply all of that? Like, is there an idea of like, if we were to commit to doing more air conditioning buses? Like, I would imagine there's a lot more ongoing costs. It sounds like the state does not match those.
For the air conditioning?
Yes.
Yeah, the state does not pay for any of the air conditioning.
So do we have any idea, like, is it going to be $500 a year to maintain air conditioning in addition?
I do not. I do not know. We would have a huge cost in buying tools and equipment, and our mechanics would have to get special licenses to be able to work on them, which could be done in Pasco.
And Zach, I would, so you're going to look at roughly $2,500 a year minimum just in labor and parts to keep them up and going is going to be my, my fairly knowledgeable guess. So I guess 35, 35.
I'll take it.
Yeah. So, and again, if we're, if we're looking at that, I'm just, I'm just running quick, quick and dirty numbers. We look at adding in, you know, doing this $20,000 retrofit. You know, it's a $700,000 one-time cost just to, just to install-
On the, on the-
Just on, on the 35, yeah, 35. So it's, it's a significant number. Don't get me wrong. It's not that I'm against it, but it's, it's, again, this is, it's, it's, it's real numbers plus, plus the other upkeep. And so there's a lot, lot to be-
Considered.
Lot to be considered. I'm sorry, Tracy.
No, I, I think the other consideration is just sort of return on investment. And, you know, given the fact that the buses will only be cooled, 20 degrees is not insignificant. But with the, you know, windows down and doors open and shut and the length of the bus ride and the time of day that even the summer school runs typically happen and, 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 you know, just looking at all of those things and, and, and trying to consider, is it, is it worth the investment in the overall scheme of things? And is, is that, you know, and that's what I just think is the, what we've talked about and considered and kind of what problem are we really trying to solve? And is this the, you know, and the whole prior, priorities of problems that we're trying to solve, is this the one that where we should spend that money?
And the other, sorry, I'll get you in one second, Diane. But the other thing to think about too is that even if we just get a portion of the, the fleet switched over to have air conditioning in the buses, even when we have these, these horrible, you know, 110-degree days, we, we're still going to shut down. You know, we don't have enough equipment to shut, to shuttle everyone around when we, when we have those horrible heat-index days. We're just going to have, some of the kids are much more comfortable than others. Yeah. Yeah. And I don't, and I, I don't mean to be flippant about that, but that's, but that's, I think, just, we're going to have a very inequitable split of, of buses. Now, again, the kids, you know, during August going to a football game or something, going to be very happy. But, you know, it's-
But that's not what equity is. Equity is giving, you give different people different amounts, right? That's what that's, equity versus equality.
Okay. Well, that's a discussion for other time.
So one of the things that I asked Vic, and he told me you would be the person to talk about that, is the difference in cost between rebuild versus replacement. And like, I know we've taken buses longer, kept them longer than we should have. Is there, what is the trade-off between that? Like, would you get enough years out of a rebuild to make it worth not buying a new one? I'm just looking at different options.
Probably not. By the time you get to the point where you need to rebuild an engine, there's other things going on with the transmission and, and your steering and all of that, too. there's other things going on with the transmission and you're steering and all of that, too.
And then, kind of on that, do we buy used buses ever?
No.
And, thank you, but can you tell me why?
Typically, no. Most buses that are up for sale have so many miles on them and they have mechanical issues that it's better to use your TVF money and just keep replacing buses.
Thank you. Oh, that makes sense.
No, only if you bought a bus from a district where it still had a few years of depreciation, they could transfer it over to our district.
Thanks.
I will say, having a fleet of buses in the summer with air conditioning when it's 104 degrees and we can cool it off to 84, I think is worth it personally. Heaven forbid we have an issue on a bus with a student. We're going to look at it and go, $700,000 is not a significant amount in that with that potential issue, I think personally. I don't know if we have that one-time funds that, like Vic was talking about, the few extra million. You know, that might be something we look at. But I, for one, would rather support air conditioning on a bus than I would not personally. So, I don't know if this is the time to make a motion, Mike, or if everybody's still...
I was going to, I'm going to have, Tracy, go ahead, we'll get to that in one second.
Okay.
Just, I just want to, kind of a point of clarification, because I think there's two conversations going on. One is, and April, can you just go back one slide for us, please? One is, one is the bus purchase plan for the new buses, right? And that recommendation. And I think the other part of the conversation is about the retrofit of existing buses and the 35 and so forth. So, you know, we were prepared, I would say, to provide this information, this recommendation on the new buses moving forward tonight. And we could go back and do some additional work and, you know, scenario building or whatever on the other part of the retrofitting. Because I don't think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that would be something that could be, like, I don't know how, that's some of the questions I'm thinking. Like, I don't know how long that would take. And just so we could put together, here would be a scenario, here's what the cost would be, here's what, you know, how long that would take. Because I don't know if it would be ready for next year and just, and then put it together in more of a independent proposal from this for the board to consider.
And to nail down costs of training and maintenance and all of that, because that's what worries me is the ongoing cost year over year.
Right, well, I think, I'm sorry.
That's where I was heading, so, yeah, so we've got this proposal tonight. But I think we need to look in more into that and get some numbers and what, where we're at potentially and those kind of things. And so that's, that's exactly where it's going.
Are you talking about for future purchases?
Yeah, so this, so, yeah, we're going to obviously make a recommendation or motion on this. But with the retrofitting and all that stuff, I would love to see some numbers on that or what that would take or where that could be. If it's just me, I can, I mean, whoever, I just want to talk about that in another.
Yeah.
Good conversation to have, because, I mean, we don't seem to bat an eye at 84% of the budget being paid for admin, right, and staff and stuff. We don't bat an eye, but then it's, or whatever percentage of the budget is.
Yeah, I just to clarify, we do not spend 84% of the budget on administration. I just want to make sure that's on the record.
Well, it's the majority of the budget, right?
Don't just give Vic a hard time over there.
But, you know, the majority of the budget, but like, you know, I don't know. But when we talk about like kids and stuff, it's like, eh, you know, I don't know.
And Mike?
Yes, sir.
I like, my two cents word is the proposed motion be, from hereforth, we require AC on our buses. And that's got to be a time period where we step into this requirement. I'm not speaking on the retrofit, I'm speaking on the purchases from now forward for buses with air conditioning.
Okay, so, because that's, because that's what we're looking at right now. So we can, if someone wants to make a motion to order these seven buses for delivery, and we've only got two, we've got the retrofit of the ones we have on order this year. Sorry, we've got a lot of stuff moving here.
Right, right, so just to clarify, first, I know April was trying to maybe share one other thing, so I just want to make sure we get that.
Please.
So, what I'll do is I'll get some information from a couple of different vendors to get a quote to retrofit the entire fleet. So we have, instead of telling us by bus what it would cost us, they would just do the whole fleet. And I'll get some costs for the board for that and show that with Tracy.
Could you also get a cost for like the summer and the sped routes?
Yes, on the total.
Because, I mean, if you want to get technical, equality is everybody has the same bus. Equity, according to WASTA, is that certain people have different things based on their needs, right? So I would love to see a quote on just the, and I'm not saying I want to do this, that's why I do want to look at the numbers, you know? So, can we also get just on the summer and the sped routes? You know, those 34 buses or whatever?
Yeah, summer school changes every year. So I'm not sure exactly how many routes we will have this year. I only know how many we had last year.
Maybe 40 buses.
For sure, but I can give you that ballpark.
That'd be awesome, thank you, that'd be great.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Transportation Director to order seven buses with AC for delivery summer 2023.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, do we have any other discussion or questions?
Dr. Pierce, did you have a comment?
I mean, is that, well, we should be, first, the first thing we should talk about is these seven buses without air conditioning, right? That's really...
That's the motion, that's all we're just...
That's what the motion is.
He just didn't say with.
So, just...
I amended the recommendation.
I would...
Yes, Tracy.
So, you know, the recommendation doesn't specify with or without air conditioning. April did verbalize that our thinking at this point, the recommendation would be without air conditioning because of the costs and all of the things that we shared. And the only, however, and I'm recognizing that Mr. Mayberry is making the motion adding the air conditioning, which is, which is fine. And now, I'm sorry, I totally lost my train of thought. I was going to ask, either ask a question or make a point here, and it has escaped me. Oh, so I just, so I just wanted to clarify, then, and maybe, maybe this is a separate part of the conversation. Would this be then the direction moving forward into the future? Or...
Yes, Ron alluded to the fact that people like to start.
I mean, by way of discussion, I, I mean, I think that we should get the quotes about what the maintenance and all that stuff, you know, I mean, because there's extra costs there, right? And I think, I think we should look at those before we, before we make a motion just to order those buses. I'm not, we might, but I think that we should look at it, you know, as taxpayer money we're talking about, right? So...
Well, but now, we've got a different topic, we've got a motion and a second to purchase the buses with air conditioning.
And we're in discussion, so let me explain my thought, and then I'll be quiet. My thought is that as we're seeing the economy now, everything costs more the longer you wait. It's costing, and more and more. If we act on it now, as we are requesting these vehicles, we can talk to the manufacturer about a reasonable cost with air conditioning. I'm just afraid if we wait a couple of years and try to retrofit these brand-new buses with AC, it's going to be a higher cost.
Also, it sounds like all the buses are going to be electric in so many years, right? So do you want to just dump a bunch of money into buses that are just going to be electric?
Well, but that's, again, we're kind of getting off the weed. We need to stay focused on what we're doing, because again, it's...
But it directly pertains to this.
I would assume, this is my assumption, is that we would probably start retrofitting our newer buses first, because they will have the longest lifespan. We wouldn't want to go spend $20,000 on a retrofitting a bus that we're going to roll off the depreciation schedule in a year.
100% agree.
So, that would be how I would do it if it were my program. Yes, Diane.
I'd like to get clarification from April. April, these seven buses, you've already put in some type of a holding order? Is that what you had said earlier?
For these seven that I'm requesting, I have the quotes for both. So we could order either one. Just want to remind you that they're non-funded by the state. So, however, we need to supplement my TVF to be able to continue to purchase buses.
We're $53,000 short.
And, do we need to talk to Vic about how money is transferred in those things? I don't know.
Mr. Roberts?
Vic, I'm going to ask you if you can just to come to the microphone so anybody who's listening from home can hear.
So, are you saying they won't let us charge the transportation fund?
They will. So it can come out of the TVF, but I will not get reimbursed for those funds. So, you're losing ground and you're trying to replace buses.
So April's saying, one's saying that Vic's going to pay for that.
And I'm saying, if you do that, she's not going to be able to buy as many buses.
Right.
So we're saying two different things.
But that's why I'm asking that question.
You know, because she's saying, get it out of the general fund. I'm saying, no, it's coming out of your fund. Instead of getting seven buses, you get six. Or that's what you guys were looking at. So that's kind of the dynamic of that.
Right, yes, Zach.
I'm showing you. To answer Diane's question, if it comes from the general fund, there'd be a budget, the next year you'd have to transfer the money if it was decided. Oh, let's take it out of the general fund, you transfer money into that transportation fund. Or you would decide, no, you only get six buses instead of seven next year, however much can fund air conditioning.
So we're going to have an ongoing cost? Okay.
So, maintenance would come out of transportation as well? Or is that more, is that going to come out of like MSOC?
No, maintenance will come out of my transportation budget.
So you're getting hit double? Okay.
Yeah, any of the repairs on buses come out of my budget.
And the state does or does not reimburse maintenance?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a second. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, I will call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Ms. Sunbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
April, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a comprehensive sexual health education process update. Mr. Scott will be presenting.
Good evening, so I'm sitting back there thinking of all these funny segues I can make about how conference of sexual health education doesn't include any numbers, but does include conference of sex health education, so. And I'm not going to be asking for any decisions about buying anything with this right now. So I think we're off to a good start. But what we wanted to do today is come to you and give you an update on where we're at with our adoption or process to go about selecting materials to meet the requirements for all districts to be providing conference of sex health education. And we want to do this tonight to kind of prepare for when we do come to you with that recommendation in May, so that we'd be sure that you have an opportunity to ask some questions and that we can be sure to be able to come prepared, providing you the information you would need to take a look at that recommendation. So we're going to do a few things tonight. We're going to go through, provide some background about Senate Bill 5395 and this CSHE requirement. For those, some of the members who have been on the board prior to December have heard some of this information before, but it's always good to review it. And certainly for our new board members, we'd like to share this with them. We also want to give specific information, we have done this in the past, but the committee that is working on this has looked at the learning standards and really is designed to answer the question of what are we going to be teaching with the new curriculum that we're deciding, that we're looking at. We want to discuss briefly the rights of parents and guardians, so that's very clear in terms of what students will be learning. We also want to talk briefly about the curriculum adoption process. We talk about that a lot, about adopting. We'll just talk about it really briefly and then kind of put it in the context of what we're doing with conferences, sex health, education. So, Senate Bill 5395 was passed by the legislature in legislative session in 2020, and then it went to the voters in 2020 as well. And so it passed also in that election. It basically requires Washington Public Schools to teach conference of sexual health education, and I'm going to define that for you here in a little bit, which will be phased in, and it's really requiring it for grades four through 12, beginning 21, 22 school year. Grades K through three are to receive instruction, social, emotional learning. There is no sexual health content found within Senate Bill 5395 for students in grades K through three. It also, the bill also maintains parents' rights to opt their children out, which is a right that currently exists for students who are encountering sexual health education throughout our health classes, starting in fourth and fifth grade. So, what we need to do, really beginning in the 22, 23 school year, because we are, on our curriculum adoption process, we were scheduled in 22, 23 to do a health adoption. We bumped that up a year early for our six through 12, and so we're able to go through and do some evaluation this year. So what we really want to be doing is we want to have evaluated and adopted new curriculum starting in the 22, 23 school year that provides for conference of sex health education at least once between grades four and five, twice between grades six and eight, and at least twice between grades six through 12. So what does that mean, twice? It means a unit of study, which typically is probably about a week's worth of lessons at one given time that is addressing some of these topics. And so that is how we're going about looking at our curriculum options on that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Again, as I mentioned, K through three is social, emotional learning. We're going to come to you in the future and talk a little bit about social, emotional learning, because our K5 health adoption is coupled with our PE adoption, and that will be happening next year for recommendation for the following year. Additionally, one of the requirements of the bills that we are going to be reporting to OS, or informing the Office Superintendent of Public Instruction about the curriculum that we're using and describing how the curriculum that we're using is meeting the requirements of the bill. But I think it's really important to stress that even OSPI in that guidance highlights that they don't have the authority to approve or deny a district's choice. And so the committee that's going through is weighing the curriculum. We're going to bring it to you. And so it's local control, board has local control over the content that we are going to be teaching. And OSPI doesn't have the authority to basically tell us that we have to do something different. So, big question is really around what are the standards? What are we teaching? So, just a couple of things to remember that, you know, all of the districts and all the schools and educators in Washington State are held to the requirement that we teach the adopted learning standards. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the learning standards and health and how it compares to some of the topics we'd be teaching. However, grade-level outcomes that you will find in the health education learning standards, those outcomes are not required to be taught. They are just examples provided by the state as to how you might, topics you may include or things you might include that would meet the requirements of teaching conference of sex health. And so, again... Well, those examples were provided as part of the standards document. The who decides it is our committee, and I'm going to talk a little bit about our committee, but again, that's decided at the local level. So, by implementing those grade-level outcomes, the idea is that we would meet the needs of the students and regarding the learning standards, the outcomes are connected to topics and core ideas. And I'm going to try to explain that and show you an example so that you can understand it best, but remembering that instructional decisions are really up to each district to determine. So, the standards that are found, the health standards for Washington State are these eight standards right here that are listed for you. And I'm not going to read through all of them, but what you will notice there is that they're fairly broad. They are around student skills and either understanding concepts, being able to... being able to analyze things, being able to access information. But again, it's very broad. And you notice that there's no reference here at all to sex, because sex is just one of the topics that's found within our health standards. One more, one more aspect about the standards is that they are, they reflect the national health education standards, and they're organized around a core idea, a topic, and an outcome. So for example, found in grade five health, the, in grade five health standards is a core idea of sexual health. The topic would be anatomy and physiology. And then the outcome that we would look for is helping students understand the functions of reproductive systems. So that's how they're kind of organized. The outcome is the part that we get to decide. And so as we look at our, we'll look a little bit deeper into that. But then when we look at the conference of sex health education topics, what's required under this specific bill is that there are these seven items. And we've shared these with the board before. So the parts that we need to make sure we're addressing are the physiological, psychological, and sociological developmental processes experienced by an individual, the development of both interpersonal and interpersonal skills to communicate, and to reduce health risks and healthy, and choose healthy behaviors and relationships, healthcare and preventative resources, abstinence and other methods of preventing unintended pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases, the development of meaningful relationships and avoidance of exploitive relationships, understanding the influences of family, peers, community, the media throughout life on healthy sexual relationships, and then affirmative consent, which means basically recognizing and responding safely and effectively, and to recognize when there's a violence or risk of violence that may be present. And then strategies that include bystander training for folks to understand what to do when they're seeing something that maybe doesn't look right. So this is where we get into a little bit the meat of what our committee has been taking a look at. So this breaks down are the health topics along the core ideas. And the core ideas are in the colored column there to the left. So the core ideas are really organized around these six topics of wellness, safety, nutrition, sexual health, social, emotional health, and substance use and abuse. So we're looking primarily at the sexual health piece. All of those you'll see in the middle column are grades five, K through five topics. And those are going to be part of our adoption when we do a K5 adoption of PE health, because we don't have standalone health classes in our elementary other than in grades four and five, where we have presentations on human growth and development, HIV/AIDS at grades four and five. The right-hand column there is, are the topics that are included within our health program for K8 or six through 12. And so again, we're mainly focused on the sexual health piece for our purposes here. You will notice on both of those that what we've done is we've struck through the self-identity piece. And I'm going to explain that a little bit more as we go. So I wanted to link in first for grades four and five. This is just a little bit bigger for you. So what we're looking here is we're looking at the health education around the core idea that sexual health, so that purple, purple color or row that I showed you on the previous. So this is an example of the topic. So the topics are on the left-hand side, anatomy, physiology, growth, development, reproduction, HIV prevention are all there. Again, we blocked out because K3 is not part of the health, of the health adoption in K. And we're not required to teach any sexual health to K3. So that, those columns are not even germane to the discussion. When we look at the right-hand columns, grade four girls in grade five, that's where we find what we currently are doing. And that's where we were looking to align and make sure that what we were doing was, you know, what was outlined here. So typically, what we're looking at with our fourth grade girls with their human growth and development is a lot around anatomy, physiology, growth and development, reproduction. And then in fifth, we don't do anything with HIV prevention for our fourth grade, because they get that in fifth grade. And so when you see blue items, it's usually taught either through SEL or it's taught at a different grade level. And if it's, if they're crossed out, those are things that our committee has either determined through looking at the standards that we're teaching now we don't teach or that we would not be teaching in the future. So in, again, we're only talking about grades four and five. And the only thing you'll see crossed out here, I believe, oh, no, there's other ones there. I'm sorry. So when we go down and we're still looking at the topic of HIV prevention, which again is required to be taught in fifth grade, the one part of this that we don't include within there is the definition of sex abuse. We feel that there is a lot of other, other ways that we're addressing this within our system without having specific teaching of students and defining what sexual abuse is. We do a lot of things around, you know, good touches and bad touches and boundaries and lots of things that occur within that we don't believe that there's really a necessity for us to get really definitive with fifth-grade age students. You know, abuse is abuse in terms of how we kind of address it. And so again, when we looked at it, it was something that we're not really teaching. And it's not something we felt we could teach very, without, you know, some very specific training for teachers or for our nurses on that. And our nurses are typically the ones who do the grade four and five instruction. When we get down into the topic of self-identity, this is one that you're going to see consistently throughout that our committee has really grappled with quite a bit. And the reason they grappled with it, and it happened, it's really kind of more even around our secondary, is that it's not that self-identity isn't important. It's just that we have a lot of other ways of dealing with self-identity within our school system. We've got policies related to gender identity. We've got processes in our buildings. And when you looked at the way these were really worded, you know, identifying how friends and family can influence ideas regarding gender roles, identity, and expression. The committee really felt like there's no way to separate out your personal opinions or your personal ideology. And to be able to teach that really well, it would really require to be a set of facts. And I don't think that the committee, which includes our parents and our teachers, really felt like there is a set of facts that would be appropriate to be, to be teaching students. And the committee, particularly our parents, had, the greatest concern was, we don't want to say that, their biggest concern was this, this should not in any way diminish the belonging of students at school. And so I think that's for our system to make sure that we're shoring up all those other systems that are in place to support all students. But particularly students that maybe are struggling with gender identity or those types of things, rather than in a health class saying, this is, this is A, this is B, this is the experience of all people who are A or all people who are B. And that was really what they've grappled with. So we have eliminated that as a, as an outcome that we would look for within our curriculum. And that's, you'll see that consistent throughout all the six, 12. We also feel like, you know, again, we're not going to be defining sexual orientation for fourth grade girls. That it was not something we were comfortable with. We eliminated that. And in the fifth grade, identifying a trusted adult's task questions, we think it's important to identify trusted adults to ask all questions to, not just specifically around gender identity and sexual orientation. So again, we, we went through and dealt with that. So that's an example of our K, of our four, five. And what we really feel a lot with our four, five is that we are in a position where we meet a lot of those requirements right now with what we currently do with grade four and grade five.
Matt, did you say grades four and five? That's all taught by nurses? It's not taught by the teachers, correct?
Typically, it's taught by the nurses. There are times when, like, for example, at this, with the school, I was principal at this elementary, the school psychologist would take the boys' group and the nurse would take the girls' group. And we typically will split them out gender-wise. So there may be some places where there's a teacher or a counselor who is willing to go teach that. But typically, it's, our nurses are the ones who develop the curriculum. And the nurses are the ones that do the preview night. And so the nurses are the one, you know, so there are some occasions where the nurses don't teach one of those, one of the groups.
Okay.
And then can we see that, that curriculum? When do we get a chance? I mean, when is it made or see, you know, I mean, how, do we get a chance to see that?
The, the fourth and fifth grade or the one we're talking of, or the, what we're working on right now?
Yeah, what you're working on.
Okay, so.
All of it, really.
Yeah, so I'll kind of get towards the end about that process of where we're at, where we're at. But there will be, we're going to be doing some presentations on the curriculum. And we've got, and then it'll be available for preview. Parents can come and look. We're going to have it at every school.
Can parents attend the classes?
Can parents attend the class? We have classroom visitation policy. And if a parent wanted to come in and observe the instruction, then going through that policy would be not a problem at all. Okay, so then. So I just wanted to share then the six through 12, because they, it gets a little bit more comprehensive in those grades, obviously. But you will see similar themes kind of emerge. And again, I'll talk a little bit about the group. But just to let you know, I mean, it's been a group of health teachers and parents who've met together. The health teachers first went through and looked at all of these and kind of indicated the standards that we were present, that we were teaching, the standards that weren't really present, and the standards where they just felt like this would not be appropriate to be part of the curriculum. And then that was shared with parents for their feedback. And I should have done at the beginning, rather than try to be clever, I should have introduced Lori Butler. Lori is our Director of Professional Development. Lori has really been the point person on organizing these meetings and working with folks, developing the feedback, has done a great job of that. And I should have introduced her and thanked her to start with. So, but we are talking about conference of sex health education. It can be a little nerve-wracking. So, so again, similar, similar type of thing here. This is the, this is the sexual health. These are the topics that we find within the curriculum. And again, these topics were vetted through our health teachers and our parents. The things that are not out, or that are not struck through are the things that we feel like we either are teaching or should be teaching and should be in our health curriculum. So again, you know, the anatomy, reproduction, and pregnancy, again, these are, these are the outcomes that are examples or suggested outcomes. They're not required. We felt like we didn't need to be spending time identifying the physical, emotional, and social effects of sexual activity, because again, we felt that that was fairly subjective. And it was not something that is universal for every person. So it really doesn't fall in kind of the factual realm. And we just felt like there's no way to really teach that well. Under the puberty and development, again, describing how sexuality and sexual expression change throughout lifespan, again, it changes for everybody differently. So it's really hard to instruct on something that can be so, so broad. You see again here under the self-identity that those, those items are struck out. And it does not mean that we don't, that we don't address, you know, that we don't address gender within it. But again, the way that these are worded are just not things that our teachers or our parents were comfortable in doing. And we just don't, we don't need to do that. Under the prevention, we also felt that there was, there was no reason for us to list the steps or to instruct on how to use a condom correctly. And the teachers weren't comfortable with that. And the parents didn't feel that that was really something that students should, needed to be learning in school. There were other resources for students and for families if they needed them. And I think that's about it. So those were the things. Now, this document, as I tried to. This document is contained at our website. And I don't want to mess this up anymore. But if you go to the KSD website under curriculum, the tab that's under curriculum, adoptions and advice, or something like there, committees, there are several documents that outline a lot of this information. And one of them, which is entitled, it's not entitled to standards, but it was updates and is this document. So people, anybody in the community can go and look at this. They can see the topics. They can see what was, what was, what was crossed out. But that is, that is, those are the topics we're looking at within our curriculum and that we would be including with our instructions. So then just to talk really briefly about the rights of parents and guardians, this is not new to us, because this is current policy. When students encounter, encounter, or when there's going to be units discussing sexual health. So we do preview the grade four and five materials every year. What we don't, what we do is we offer right now the opportunity for parents to opt out. Under this law, we would have to have the same type of preview opportunity for all of our sexual health education materials that we do for that four, five, and that we would have then a process to go through. But it's really, it's really very clear within the law that you're not, you're not going to, there's no, if a parent wants topped out, they get topped out. It's not where you have to. You don't, you know, I mean, there is a request for that. And what we need to do as a district as we get into this is make sure that that's very clear to parents on how to do this. And it's very clear for instructors about when they need to communicate with families that this is going to be offered. So we'll, we'll do some work around that. But parents can do that. And then the other important thing is that in the curriculums we're looking at, just to kind of preview, both of the ones that we were looking at that we're citing, they have really great options for how that content is not included. You cannot include it at certain grade levels. You cannot include it for certain kids. So if a student opts out, they don't even have to be subjected to the material. So there's some great tools that publishers, because they know about this, have designed to help with that. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in, in May. So again, the, we want parents to understand, you're not opting out of health. You're opting out of the sexual part of health. But that that is an option and that students are not penalized. There's alternative activities that are still aligned to the health standards, just not those health standards that they would be participating in. So a little bit just about the curriculum adoption process. You know, we follow board policy. We've got several policies, but the ones that really are germane to this are the, our 2121 curriculum adoption. Also, our 2335, which is how we handle health and family life and sex education. That's a policy that we're, that we are following along with the selection, adoption, instruction materials. These policies in a nutshell really, really say a few things. They say that the curriculum needs to be aligned to state standards, because that's the requirement from, from the state. That we have established processes for looking and determining recommending materials for adoption. The parents and community are very involved in that process. And particularly when it comes to topics of sex education, they are, they are even more involved throughout the whole process than they are sometimes when we're doing, for example, right now, world language adoption. And that's by, and that is by policy. And that, again, just affirming that it's the board's authority to approve curriculum materials. So typically, what we would do is we put together a committee of teachers, administrators, parents, as appropriate. We meet, we review the standards, the scope and sequence. We determine what instructional materials would be necessary to meet the instructional needs of the teachers, the learning needs of the students. And, and then we would kind of develop some selection criteria. Then we'd have materials that were presented by publishers. And the committee then would apply that criteria and create, and come up with their choice. Once we made the determination, what we would do is we would take it out to the community as large and let them preview it and ask questions and review the materials. And then after we get all that, I come to you and I provide the recommendation. I tell you about that whole process, all the feedback we received. And then you would make that determination. Again, the process typically takes us about two years. This law was passed in 2020. We spent most of last spring working on bystander training and the other. And I think I'm going to get to those slides. I'm getting probably ahead of myself. But typically, it takes two years. We're doing it a little bit more, a little more, more quickly with this because of just the requirements to get it in place. So what have we done? We've created a committee of health teachers first, who looked at those standards that I just were sharing with you to determine what we needed to look for, what was being taught, what was not being taught, what were we going to teach? We determined that we really needed to do a full adoption, because our last adoption was in 2014, and we were scheduled for an adoption in a couple of years. So we decided we just needed to move forward with that. We felt like, and as I mentioned before, that the requirements are currently being very well met for grades four and five. And so we really didn't feel we needed to do anything with that, because they are required to get HIV/AIDS and growth and development. And so we didn't feel we needed to do anything with that curriculum at this point. And then, like I said, the bystander training and affirmative consent is not necessarily found within the standards for sexual health, but they are part of that law. And so that was the very first thing that our committee of parents and teachers did is to look at what would we do for bystander training and affirmative consent. So then in January of this year, we put out a request on, through our, through our communication channels, requesting people, if they would like to serve on the committee, to be able to, to apply to do that. They were selected. We have received about 120 applications. So, you know, we can't have a 120-person committee. We narrowed it down to 25 people. But based on their, their responses to the application, we wanted to fire, to select people who have diverse viewpoints and a broad range of perspective. We didn't want a bunch of people who really thought that it was important to have conference of sex education. it was important to have Conference of Sexual Education. And we didn't want a bunch of people who thought that there's no way we should have this. We wanted to have a good cross-section of people to hear all viewpoints. And I think we've done a good job of that. This group met three or four times and provided input on the supplemental materials for teaching bystander training and affirmative consent. Were very helpful, particularly the parents very helpful in just bringing the parent perspective to those materials. And then we developed some lessons to address that that will be put into our teachers' hands and that was the first step. So it was really a great way for them to start working together and to kind of get an understanding of what this law was all about. So then we began this September in the curriculum adoption process that I kind of outlined in the previous slide. So health teachers came together and they explored four different curricula. And then in February, we brought the parents into that mix. So we had, first the teachers kind of looking at it to, and sometimes what the reason we do that is because the teachers are really, they're looking at it through a teacher lens and kind of a teacher, you know, they use teacher jargon and they, they talk about things that are really hard for parents to even really get into because it's not really what parents are into. So we wanted to do first look at it with them. But then we also took those same four curricula to our parents and combined the two groups. They met and they narrowed the choices down from the four to two. And then we've just completed both of the publisher presentations on those and we're collecting feedback. And we'll come together one more time to make sure that we've, we've selected which, which one of the two curriculums would best meet our needs, the, and get feedback and the rationale from parents. Then we'll be developing a means of going out and getting wider community feedback. So typically, again, this has been done through kind of some school showcases or having the curriculum materials at the school, inviting parents to come in, tying it to ATP night or something like that. We think we probably need to do something a little bit more beefy with this. So it's probably going to be in the form of, you know, probably some, some live and broadcast, you know, preview sessions, sharing this with our community. My goal is to have the parents who served on the committee be part of that so that they can share their perspective as parents, so that other parents know, you know, kind of why the parents are comfortable or the process and share that. So we'll be doing that between pretty much now and, you know, just right before May 25th. And then we'll come to you with that curriculum that has been presented. And we'll request, we'll recommend that to be adopted. The other thing that I'll just mention is that we all know that, you know, there's curriculum and then there's the teaching that happens in the classroom. And so what we really want to do is make sure that when we do this implementation and the training of our teachers, that it is, that is very specific and ongoing, that there is administrative involvement in the oversight of this curriculum because it is just a very sensitive topic. And we know how sensitive it is for our community. And we do not want people deciding to do their own thing with the curriculum. We want them to be teaching the standards and the things that this committee and that you ultimately, the school board, have decided are important. So that's, that'll be in the implementation process, which usually takes a few years as well. So, questions or comments? Anything that I can clarify?
I think you guys did a good job of crossing out certain things. I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that it's apparently easy to opt out and that we will get to see the curriculum and the parents can be involved in that. So I just appreciate those things.
So I appreciate the extra time that you're going to give and the online option for parents to review that. My question always is, Spanish language interpretation will be available? Is that correct? In both live and online?
Yes.
Thank you.
On this, the spreadsheet that you showed, the standards and stuff, if we review this next week, have questions, are you the contact or should we go to Lori?
Either myself or Lori would be happy to, you know, if it's something specific about any discussion on the committee, I might kick it to Lori to help us answer that because she was with those.
What was your last name?
Butler. L-O-R-I.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I jumped.
The contacts, Tracy and then.
Yeah. And yeah, that would be great.
I'm sorry, typical, typical channels. Yes, we'll get that information to you, yes.
Ron, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Appreciate it.
And thank you Lori, too.
Just thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is unfinished business that I was trying to do three hours ago. Mr. Jones will be rejoining us.
There he is.
There's the man.
Got a real nice 50 slide presentation.
And you'll read it to us, correct?
Slowly. All right. Once again, good evening, Dr. Pierce, members of the board. So I'll be following up on the action plan for, and recommendation for the school and drinking water action plan. So once again, this is the background. The RCW, though, recently passed that basically changed the, it from 15 parts per billion to the new standard being five parts, greater than five parts per billion. Some of the changes based on the consultation we've done with Department of Health is really kind of applies mainly to the bottom one there. As you see, we now have a, for anything that hasn't been tested, they're now telling us that we basically don't have to get those tested until 2026. Now, of course, our policy is a lot more aggressive than that because the intent is to address this in a timely manner. So, but that's important to note because if you recall in the last board member, or the last board meeting, there were some questions as to which direction we were going to have to go and how they were going to look at our data. This is the announcement that was, that was put out, the public communication on the website. And I did not receive any comments. So, so once again, public comment, didn't receive any. So Department of Health, so once again, now, while they say that, they told us that 2026 deadline will apply to us for anything that has been tested, they also acknowledge they haven't really had a chance to analyze our current data. So a little more to be determined on that. And that's primarily because their main focus at this point is getting sampling teams out to schools. And that's, that's their primary focus at this point. So they just don't have the resources to go through ours and other school districts' data. And they did say the action plan really only needs to address anything we've tested. Now, of course, we've expanded on that because once again, the intent, we feel that we need to go further. The intent is to address this in a timely manner. So our action plan is a little more comprehensive than that, which, which is good. It gives us more of a long-term, term plan. But Department of Health immediate concern is just anything that we're aware of. That's, that's really it. It's pretty cut and dry. So.
Perfect.
So the recommendation at this point would be the board adopts the lead in drinking water action plan as presented.
Does anyone have any questions? I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board adopt the lead in drinking water action plan as presented.
I second it.
First and the second, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunbig?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, new business is policy number 3143, Students' Notification and Dissemination of Information About Student Offenses and notification of threats of violence or harm. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, I'm going to bring us home tonight. So there's two policies for presentation to the board. The first policy, 3143, is one that I realized that we needed to codify into policy when I was going through and we were going through all the discipline policies. So this is a brand new policy for us that we just need to get into policy. I mean, it is one of the required policies that we have. We have been following this practice. So this policy just codifies what our practice currently is and needs to be when it, when it comes to the legal requirements to notify staff or others about student offenders. So what this policy says, that the district sometimes receives information or notification from like the sheriff's office or other places about student offenders. And we have notification requirements to ensure that appropriate staff are notified if we've got a student, for example, who's a registered sex offender and attending our schools. So this policy outlines all of that. It also outlines our requirement to notify staff if there's a threat of violence against them. And again, these are processes that we have in place, things that we are doing. It's just not codified into policy. So the verbatim, the language essentially here is verbatim from the WASDA model policy. And so you don't see any strike throughs or underlines because it's all new for us because we don't have this policy currently in place.
Does anyone have a chance to read this policy?
I did not read it. I should have.
Do we have any questions or comments regarding policy number 3143? If not, I will entertain a motion.
This isn't one we do like a first or second reading thing, right? We can.
I believe as we just, we can just adopt it as, because we have not, because we're not making any changes to it. We're just adopting the policy as written.
Okay.
And we could make changes next week or anytime, right?
Yes.
In theory.
No, we'd have to. I don't think we, it's not quite that easy, I don't think.
Right, so.
Mike, you should have read this thing.
The board can either do it for first reading or first and second reading. Typically, you know, it has varied. But if there, if you, if, like, I wouldn't recommend that you vote on it tonight if you want to see changes on it next time because we would just be bringing it again for, I mean, unless there was like a typo or something that you wanted to change right now on the fly that we could do.
I probably agree with that. I just didn't have it read it and I probably should, I feel like.
Is this time sensitive?
Not really, in that, you know, we should have had it on the books already. We don't, but this is reflective of our current practice. So there's not any kind of pressing, you know, this could come back if you want more time to look over it. I included the procedure in your materials too, which is the administrative procedure. You're really only, you know, needing to approve the policy. But if the board needs more time and wants to review it, I can certainly bring this back at the next meeting. It's not a problem.
Mike, would that, would you feel better about that? It's not a problem.
I would. Now, we can go super fast.
Next, next meeting.
Really, no problem.
All right, then we will move, move the adoption of this policy to the next meeting.
And I apologize, I will.
Well, that's the classification. You can approve it for first reading, which will require second reading.
Which we can do.
That gets approved, flipped it over, and then we come back to second reading with the final reading.
Okay.
I'll do that.
That's fine.
So I approve policy 3143 for first reading, or move to approve policy 3143 for first reading.
I second.
I have a first and second. Any other comments or questions? I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunbig?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to policy procedure number 4131, Board of Directors, Public Participation. Dr. Pierce will present this as well.
Okay, so this, this one came up at the last board meeting with respect to this, the whole seating of time and that kind of thing. So as I looked at policy 1431, I went to the WASDA model policy to see if there were other things that were different from our policy. It's interesting, this is a longer term thing, but they really put all of their, they've really one policy that covers a whole bunch of things that we have multiple policies to address. And so moving forward into the future at some point, not tonight, but as we review all the, and put together a good solid process for reviewing all of our policies on a regular basis, it might be a good opportunity to combine a whole bunch of little board governance policies into one larger, kind of cleaner policy. Tonight, what I have for you though is what I recommend, what I'm recommending based on what I saw in the WASDA policy. And so it's a strike through underline. I think it just clarifies a couple of things that anybody can attend a board meeting and provide public comment. You don't have to live within the district boundary. And that by law, the board can't require people to sign in to attend a meeting or make them complete a questionnaire or anything. We didn't have that in the current board policy, so I thought that was probably a good thing to include. We also have language similar to what WASDA has in terms of the statement that the board is making about valuing public comment and the importance of involving members of the public in meeting. We didn't have anything in our policy about the language that we use every time for public comment, that the board is providing the 30-minute period at the beginning of every meeting. And so this language, I think, just is included in WASDA policy tailored for us. And I think it makes it a little bit clearer that there's a 30-minute public time and that there's two minutes per. And it clarifies that it's really not a back and forth time with the public, but it's a time to hear a comment. So I kind of liked when I looked into it, I know it's beyond what the seating of time piece was, but I thought it clarified a couple of other parts that would be nice. Then in the procedure that goes with this, I'll bring that up real quick. Again, just in looking at the model policy from WASDA, one thing I should point out, they, they call it public attendance and comment. So that, and then again, kind of specify the 30-minute time period. They include a little bit of information that makes it clear that by asking people to sign up to speak, it's different from asking them to sign up to attend a meeting. And that's just what the current practice is and how people get called forward and recognized to make that comment. We did have, the public comment, as long as I've been here, I think, has been two minutes. Somewhere in here, it says three, either in the policy or the procedure. So to be consistent with what the actual practice is, I updated that part. They had some nice language that is similar to what the current board policy is about, what kind of comments aren't allowable in terms of uncivil comments. And we say some of those things in the, in the introductory remarks that the board president reads prior to public comment. But I think some of these things just make it a little bit clearer of what's not allowed. And then the part that wasn't in the WASDA model policy, I'm just trying, the part that we actually wanted to look at about the seating of time, I'm sorry, I just need to find it now. I added some language right here to the, kind of the procedure of what, how public comments handled at the board meeting. And this is where I wasn't exactly sure what you wanted me to say, so I just took a stab at it. But I think what, you know, typically in my experience, it's just really up to the, to the board president to decide if, if the board president wants to allow somebody to cede their time. Because it may be that I've got, you know, I've got a group of three people and what we kind of experienced, the meeting where this came up, it was like seating to one person. And that might be what the board president deems as reasonable and not problematic. But the board president, but the question would be, if you put something in policy language about it's allowable, I'm not sure if you want one person to be able to cede their time, you know, to 50 other people. So that's what the piece that I.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, as I read this, my first thought was, can we, can we make changes to cede their time to no more than two individuals? Then nobody has to make a decision on seating time, like, hey, great, we're going to allow you to cede it, that gives you six minutes to share your one topic. Because, yeah, I don't necessarily think we need one person to spend 30 minutes reading, you know, I think, because there's going to be others.
It's a board president in a position where he has to be this like judge, right, of like, how many, how many times am I going to allow this thing to happen? And that's, and so I think maybe just like, rather than just say whatever the president says, like, I think it should sort of be like a standard, right? And then that's just kind of what it is. And then he's just following the rule rather than making it up kind of based on his opinion or his or her opinion at the time. That's, it's like, take that burden off of the president. That's, that would be my thought. So like up to three times or something.
I'd even go with one.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm all about brevity.
And the only thing I, and I can, you know, I can modify this however, however you want. want. I think the only thing I was thinking about, if it's, if it's like three people or something, that's six minutes, then you might run into the issue of if you set aside 30 minutes for public comment and you've got three people who are, you know, two people who've ceded their time to another person, you've got one person speaking for six minutes, which is a pretty big chunk of that 30-minute time.
Yeah.
And so unless you want to be prepared to extend the time, extend the time, it might, it might result in that, right? So that's the other piece to just think about.
Have like individuals concede their time to others up to two times or something like that.
I, I even agree with Mike. I think you get, you can, you cede your time to one, one person, that's four minutes. That's, I didn't, I mean, the kids in math in Cool could probably do the percent for me, but what's that, like 10% of the public comments is to one person?
And then that meets what some districts do, the three-minute time. Because I know we've had people who come to speak and say, oh, I thought I had three minutes. And they were cut off after three. So I would think that the one.
And I think it's, yeah, and, and Gail, I appreciate you bringing this up because again, I, that was a new one for me. I'm like, uh, sure. So anyway.
The times I've been where we ceded times are not times that are time limited. Like if you're in representative assemblies or there's something that may go on until midnight and people cede time over and over, I've never seen that in a time limited capacity.
Right, well, next, but like I say, we can make this up. So Ron, do you have thoughts, sir?
Uh, not on that particular part, but I do want to add that we probably should have restated that political campaigning is not allowed. I need to see that as one of your bullets.
So that, that question has come up about what speech, you know, what are, what can we limit or not limit when it comes to speech? And so I did ask Bronson to look into that. And based on, you know, the research that he's done, we don't, we don't see anywhere that, that says the board can limit political speech. And then kind of what is political speech? That there can be limitations on, you know, something that causes a disruption, a threat of violence to another person, those kinds of things. I can go back and talk with, talk with Bronson again to get any further clarification on that, but just, there's a whole free speech piece of this too. And so it's not, he couldn't find any, anything that really is permissible to say political speech isn't allowed or political campaigning, so.
I'm willing to do it, Bronson, with that. I, I believe I can help you with that.
He says he believes he can help you with that.
Okay, okay. That sounds good.
Right, so this is feeling a little bit like, oh, you're, sorry, Ron, I apologize for interrupting. So this feels, feeling a little bit like a first reading program again. So we've got a few changes we need to make.
Or additions.
Additions or rewording.
Okay, so the question is about the political campaigning?
Yes.
And then also rewording this and what I'm hearing is you'd like it to read something about, maybe permitted to cede their time to what, to not more than one other person.
Yeah.
And my only other, you know, thought about this is, can I, when, when does that happen? Does that happen if, like, I'm, I'm going, like, everybody signs up and then I'm going over a little bit? And so my friend who's with me on the fly, like happened in the previous meeting, says, you can have my time? Or can I, when I sign up, can I say I'm, I'm signing up for, for myself and my friend Matt and now I have four minutes at, at the inception of signup? I just think we need to be really clear about it so people don't get confused.
I'll get on the fly.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
So when this is, when this has been done, it's generally, but not, of course, maybe always, a planned activity. And so Mike and I are going to speak on, we think this school should be painted purple. And I give my 1.5 minutes and I have a half a minute left. And I say, I cede the rest of my time to Mike and then he finishes it up. So generally, you wouldn't necessarily sign up because I don't know how much of my time it's going to take. So I may finish everything, I may not. So I don't know about having to write that down that I'm going to cede. I've never seen that and I don't know if that is in Robert's Rules of Order anywhere.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think we, I, I think this, the speaker has to finish and then the next speaker needs to, there needs to be a, a cutoff. And the next speaker needs to say, I'm ceding my time back to whoever to, to comment for me or whatever.
They just say, I cede my time.
It has to be, there, I, I want, I think there needs to be that cutoff so that we're not doing that like, hey, yeah, I got, you know, a minute left, does it go ahead? And, yeah.
Okay, so that's good. I'll try to figure out some way to write that.
You can do it, you can do it.
Good luck, we got, we got faith in you.
Thank you. Okay.
Slight clarification real quick. So is the way, so someone could talk for, say, Mr. Connors talks for a minute and then the remainder of his minute he can give to you?
Correct.
Or is it at the start of it, that if he's going to cede his time, he needs to give it all away at the start and not speak?
Oh.
That's how I interpret, that's what happened last.
Well, she spoke and ran out of time and then that second person ceded it back. But we're, what we're saying is you would have to move to the other one. But that's a good question.
But, yeah.
I was just.
I was gonna say, you're, so if you speak for a minute, you're done. The next person can cede their two minutes to you and you can get another two minutes, but.
But not cede.
But we're not ceding additional minutes to, to people. We're, we're ceding two more minutes to one person.
No, you're ceding the remainder of your time and their two minutes is how it works.
Okay.
That's Robert's Rules of Order. Why is he doing that?
All right.
Can I, 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 can I say it back where I think we are so I can make sure I know what I'm writing up? So I think it would look like this. I'm, Matt and I have both signed up to speak about something. And I get up to do my part and I go and when I'm done, although we don't really do it like that, so I'm sorry, I'm thinking, like, I don't really know if, with the, with the way the timer works, I don't know if somebody finishes, we don't really know right now and the way we keep time, we can change it, but like that there's 20 seconds left of their time remaining. We don't know that, right? But, so are you trying to say that you want to do that and then I could say, okay, I spoke for a minute and 40 seconds and now there's 20 seconds left and I'm donating that 20 seconds to Matt and now Matt has two minutes and 20 seconds?
That's how it's done.
Oh, that sounds really horrible.
That is how you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're probably not going to have a speaker come up and, I mean, I don't know.
But ceding back, you can't feed back. I mean, that word doesn't even work that way, but I'm giving my time to you. I can't give it.
I think you can cede your, your entire allotted time.
I agree.
To someone else.
I agree.
Be the way to phrase that. Otherwise, you know, we're not.
Yeah, I agree with Mike.
I love you all tons, but I don't want to sit here and stop watch.
I agree with Mike, yeah.
That's, that's too much.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So would that look like this? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse.
Mr. Mabry.
Oh, sorry.
Are, you have to remove the not permitted, they are permitted, individuals are permitted.
Let him finish.
Mr. Mabry, do you have a thought?
My thought is all or nothing.
There you go.
No caution.
I agree.
And I'll still fuss with this. Okay, so it would look like this. I'm speaking, the timer go, it turns red and I'm not done. And instead of being cut off midway, my friend Matt can say, I cede my time to Tracy and now I have two more minutes to complete what I was saying, but Matt doesn't get to speak because he gave me my, his time.
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll fuss with this and bring it back next time.
You're close.
Okay, do we need to work this on first reading or just we're gonna?
She's gonna.
Rework it both.
Still the political part, the campaigning part.
All right, all right, so we're gonna revisit this at the next meeting.
Unfinished.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect, all right, we're almost done and it's almost, you know, 9:30.
Almost ready, Mike.
Okay, next meeting agenda, we have annual staff human resources update, the 22, 23 preliminary budget, and the executive session of portability legal update. Anything else we need to address?
I would like to address at the next meeting, sorry guys, the possibility of stepping up facility improvement at needed facilities at some future meeting of Park and Highland.
Park and Highland.
Highland sounds like a rebuild.
No, it's the, the facility, the.
Stepping up the.
Yeah, he's concerned about the, 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 the status and quality of the Highland buildings and the Park buildings. Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Is he talking about the year, or the year up?
About, yeah, about whether, how we move it up, we move it forward because they have been.
Right.
Less loved than others, how's that? Okay, perfect. Anything else? Any other? All right, I'm ready to close her down.
All right, go for it.